Good evening, everybody. It's 7:30, so we're going to start tonight. We are going to have a joint meeting in a few minutes with the Central Business Architecture Committee. But to begin, we're going to open up the planning board here. We've got some administrative issues to deal with, so we'll start with that first. But before we get to that, we have the public sharing portion of the evening. So, does anybody here in the audience have anything, any comments on anything that does not relate to what we're going to talk about later tonight? If you do, just raise your hand.
I don't think we have our hands up.
And if not, we'll get started. Okay, so we're going to jump in. Our first order of business tonight, scheduled for 7:30, is a request by the Clark School for the amendment to a permit to extend the time to start the construction of the parking lot at 47 Roundhill Road, North Hampton map ID 31B-064. So Karen, let me walk us through what is being requested.
Sure. So, the Board approved site plan two years and a little bit ago for, it was all part of the consolidation of Clark School from all the buildings on Roundhill Road to the One Bell Hall building, and they were going to be bringing all the staff over to park behind that one building. So, the Board approved the permit. They haven't had to construct the lot yet, and so they bumped up against their expiration. They have two years to substantially start a project once the Board issues a permit. So, they're here in front of you. Actually, effectively, the permit did expire in between the time they submitted their application in this hearing, so essentially, the request would be to officially reissue the permit. Nothing's changed. And then, so the applicants here to sort of describe maybe why they haven't done it, maybe what their timeframe is, but that's generally what it is, pretty straightforward.
Okay. Rick, you're for Clark School?
Sure. I'm Rick Klein, partner of the Berkshire Design Group, on behalf of the Clark School. While the permit was issued, as you know, Opel had purchased part of the Clark School, and as an interim move, the Opel Development offered parking to the Clark School because there's ample parking up there while they were working on buildings and so on. And as many of you might be aware, it's been slow to get started up there on the Opel side of things, and there's still plenty of parking available. So, Clark has just gone along parking basically without having the expense of building the parking lot. And at some point, that will change shortly, so what we'd like to do tonight is ask for an application extension or actually maybe a new permit to be reissued like this, just so we have a little bit more time to be able to build the parking.
So, it's not truly an extension of a permit, it's a whole new permit?
Right. You would reissue a permit, and then it has a new date, a new, you know, start date essentially, so then therefore another two-year extension.
Mark, do they repay the application fee, and does that run the clock for two years, just like you would have, or, I mean, do I think about it as a whole separate permit?
No. I mean, you know, if they had moved a little more quickly, they would have come in and still asked for an amendment essentially, same fee, but then you still would have issued an amended permit that gets recorded at the registry deeds. The bottom line is, you know, just to carry that record through on the property to show that the permit's still valid.
I might point out, too, that there was a stormwater permit approved by this, by the City of Northampton, which is still in effect for another three years.
For three more years?
Yes.
Are there any other permits that were part of this process?
I don't know.
Any questions by the Board? Seems pretty straightforward that had it been submitted as an amendment, we wouldn't have any reason not to have approved it, so.
And maybe we approve the request for extension, project is unchanged?
Yeah, I need to close public comment first.
Close public comment.
Motion to close public comment.
Motion to close public comment.
Second. All in favor? Okay, now, discussion, any discussion? No? Okay.
Now, I move that we run through request of the Clark School for an amendment to permit to extend the time to start the construction of the parking lot at 47 Roundhill Road, Northampton map ID 31B-064.
Second? Discussion? No? All in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Here you go, Rick. Thank you. Okay, how long you want to open up?
Sure. So, this is the joint session between the Central Business Architecture Committee and the Planning Board. This meeting was published on October 30th and November 6th, and it is to review special permit for greater than five feet front setback and site plan review by HAP Incorporated for construction of 64,250 square feet, five-story building and site layout at 155 Pleasant Street, North Hampton, map 32C-58. So, start by opening up to the applicant to present the project.
We have more materials to hand out last minute. Is it possible to turn out some of these lights so that the screen?
Yeah, the switch is behind you at the back of the door. I think the one to closes to the door, just one.
Still one.
A gentleman just handing around, this is Doug Dick. She's in, next to him is Naomi Patel. She's a landscape architect. Steve DiAmbrogio is a civil engineer. I'm Peter Fotherham, also an architect. And Peter Serafino is the project manager for HAP, who is the applicant tonight. Rather than grace you with a long and exhausting detailed presentation, we're just going to do a quick overview of the building design, the site context, the landscape design, the civil engineering, and then wrapping up with the plaza design in front of the building. And then, we're eager to answer your specific questions once we get through that. Presuming that technology works for us tonight. So, this is an overview of the site currently. To orient ourselves, this is Main Street along through here, King Street up through here. Can people see this mouse running around? Okay. That's the railroad, rail trail, train station, garage. This is our site. And in particular, one of the things we notice is how what's north of that rail trail is primarily large, close buildings, and what's outside of that are primarily small, separated buildings. I mean, there are exceptions. You've got Sylvester's in here, condos down there. North is up on this, as you probably have figured out. 120 years ago, this is the same area. Pleasant Street's here. The rail trail then was rails, and the Mill River was running right through here, you know, next to the site and then heading south. Probably some of the reason that we have smaller, more separate buildings out here is because that Mill River was occasionally ill behaved, exceeding its banks.
I'm having trouble hearing you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So, should I move us closer? Is that any better? Nope. Is this on? Apparently. All right. I'll speak louder. Sorry.
Okay.
The city, as you know, has, you know, revised its zoning to accommodate the sustainability plan that it's implementing. And part of how they've done that is to increase the size of buildings allowed and to decrease the parking required. And this is part of why. Our site is right in here, and this arc is about a five-minute walk. And there are over 1,800, 1,500 parking spaces within that five-minute walk that are available at night for free or monthly parking pass, particularly here, these two long-term parking spaces or parking lots, right down the bike path from the site. And there's a great deal to walk to from here. You've got the post office up here, CVS is in here, Cero's Market and Pharmacy, State Street Liquors and Fruit Store, public library's right there, City Hall, the bus station, Pulaski Park, train station over here, and not to mention, there are bus stops right in front, and more than a few restaurants. This is the site as it exists now. The bike path is along here to the south of the site. Along here is the frontage on Pleasant Street. This is the overgrown building, or, sorry, overgrown tree behind which is this building. Dormitory building, two and a half stories tall, three floors of dorm rooms, including the basement. There's one bathroom on each floor, there's one kitchen in the building, and the building's in disrepair. So, HAP intends a new building. It meets the city's sustainability goals, as well as the CVAC design goals, as well as providing a facility in which HAP can provide affordable apartments, as well as counseling services. Again, I think this is where I toggle between, and it worked! Yes! So, we're intending a new building in this area, Pleasant Street again, bike path. And if I do this right, yes! You can see how the proposed building fills in a gap that's in that edge I was talking about of the more dense, taller, closer buildings. And as we get a bit closer, we can talk a little bit more about the building so far as it returns the 58 apartments that are in the current building, and it adds 14 more. It replaces the vacant side yard with up to four storefronts of retail. It adds a traditional facade along the Pleasant Street that's in the similar size of its neighbor adjacent to it and across the way. There's a sort of urban woodland experience to be enjoyed along the bike path, and we begin to bring that out in front of the building. In addition to increasing the width of the sidewalk, we provide a sitting plaza in this area and an art or parklet along here. Doug, this would be a good place for you to step up because I'm starting to run out of wind, if you want, you know?
Sure.
Okay.
So, just to get this. So, a little bit closer view reveals a couple of things. Here's the, one of the parklets, an entrance to the building. We'll get into that more later. Note the very busy roof scape. These are, is in a large array of solar panels, which would provide a fairly good portion of the electricity for the building. These little objects are rooftop condensing units, and if we were to zoom in a little closer, you'd see some three-foot tall exhausts and intake pipes on the roof as well, and also right there, a little penthouse for the elevator. And take note of those because once we go down to the street level, you'll see that you'll no longer be able to see them because they're very low profile, and also they're set back from the edge of the building, and we have a small parapet that begins to screen them. The other thing I wanted to point out was, there's some context feature, or, there's some contextual issues that we're trying to relate to with the building. This portion, of course, is the facade that addresses the street, responding to the precedent of some of the commercial buildings on Main Street and Pleasant. This area right here, and maybe you can zoom around, Peter, is a courtyard we've created to provide plenty of open space and light for this building, which are also apartments, five stories, and also for the proposed building. You can see as well that we've tried to break the building into four basic masses, this being one here.
See if we can do this together.
Yeah, let's see if you get seasick, let us know. The second mass, the third mass, and the fourth mass. And the reason for doing that is to, even though it is a fairly large structure, is to create a scale that's more complementary to the context.
Want to do the next one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, this takes us down to street level, to the south on Pleasant Street, and what we're trying to point out is kind of the phenomenon that Peter suggested, these are the individual freestanding buildings. As we move down Pleasant Street towards the more urban area of Main Street, you begin to see this traditional front, five stories, like the existing building next to it, begins to create that more, that slightly denser, taller urban fabric. Once again, you're beginning to now finally be able to see the facade that's facing towards the bike path, and we'll get into materials in a bit, but the buff really represents the brick portion of the building, traditionally detailed. This is also brick. And the gray is a cementitious panel, which we can show you samples of, that extends along the bike path and then around and into the courtyard where it's not seen so much from the street. This is the view that begins to introduce the main, the street facade from the parking lot at the train station, and here you can begin to see the composition of the facade, a first-floor retail area with one, two, three, four potential retail entrances with, we're proposing a canopy and then a band for signage for the retail. As you can see, we've introduced some detail in the brick where the brick is stepped back in increments of a half to three-quarters of an inch to create these pilasters, kind of a A-B-A rhythm, and with paired up double-hung windows in the front typically, with some singles, and then we create a belt course that begins to respond to the scale of the building next to it. It's a little, the belt course is a little lower. And then, the top floor features a cornice, painted metal cornice that's inspired by some of the context buildings on Main Street. This is a feature I want to point out. This setback area is the entrance into the apartment portion of the building. So, this is retail, this is the public, and this is the entrance to the apartments and also the offices that HAP will have in the building where they provide services and management. And then, this is the rail trail.
Right. I mean, I want to interject here that next week, Peter Serafino and I are meeting with the Northampton Arts Council because we're discussing this area as a location for public art in addition to, well, you get the idea.
And I think we can flip over to the PowerPoint then.
Okay. Ah, yeah, that's good. There we go.
Yeah. So, getting back to the facade, this is a little, the, little more representative of how the landscape will work with the facade, and Naomi will be getting into this area, which is very important to the project. I just wanted to point out here that this setback area is brick like the facade, it's a buff brick, and it keeps some of the important alignments with the main traditional facade, but it begins to become a little more abstract as we move back to the more contemporary parts of the building. And then, a feature that's a little hard to see here, but you see right there is another fin wall of brick, and then there's another one behind that to begin to take the, the street facade material and bring it back in towards the rear of the building. Okay? So, just a bit about the building so you can see how it works. This is Pleasant Street. This is the retail portion, so it's, it's basically wide-open retail space with up to four tenants with those four openings. This is the setback area where you'd enter into the building for the apartments. These are the HAP offices where they provide services, a workshop to maintain the building and others in Northampton. And then, on the first floor, we have some one-bedroom and studio apartments. On the second through fourth floors, it's completely residential with one-bedroom and studio apartments. As well as, I'll point it out here, there are some shared common spaces for, because the apartments are small, it allows people to meet and gather within the building on each floor, as well as kind of a common work area here and a laundry there. And the fifth floor is a partial floor with the same program elements. The roof plan, once again, all of these are solar panels, these are the mechanical units and the penthouse. And as you can see, they're all set back. So, I can barely read these here, but the height of the building, the cornice line is right at 60 feet, so that's this line right here. And we have a couple, the wing walls extend up just slightly.
To about 63 feet.
This, this is the area Peter was mentioning where we hope to incorporate art into the building. Storefront, once again, it's the buff brick. The windows are double-hung, they will be black. The storefront is aluminum, it will be painted a deep gray. We've got samples over here of that. All glass storefront, clear glass.
A lot of the proportions from the windows and the pilasters and so on come out of the guidelines for the CVAC district. We're sort of mixing, yeah, okay.
So, looking quickly at some precedents, one thing that we've looked at is this combination of different types of brick in the Central Business District area, red brick, brown brick, orange brick, as well as some buff bricks. These are some examples of the buildings that we've taken, we've looked at hard. This one's a buff brick, similar proportions on the openings, similar height of the cornice. Thank you.
Another example with retail, signage, canopies, buff brick, another buff brick building. And the buff brick buildings tend to be sprinkled in, we've found, just as we've looked at the downtown area, within areas of predominantly red brick. And the area where exist, the existing buildings around the proposed site is also red brick, so will be kind of that unique, but not unusual, buff brick that's mixed into the, to the streetscape. Another point that you'll see in the next elevation, a lot of the existing buildings on Main Street and Pleasant have the beautiful face brick that turns a corner, it stops, and then you get the more prosaic material behind that. Same with this, there's, there's a couple of examples of that. Another example here, the face brick turns a corner and a more inexpensive prosaic brick behind it. An example of a recent addition where, of course, the red brick at the street and then a more contemporary series of materials further back where they're less a part of the street experience. This is the facade on the Manheim Rail Trail, and you can see how we're taking the face brick, turning the corner, and then transitioning to a less expensive, more prosaic material again, with a series of these brick fin walls that, that helps us make the transition from the street facade brick to more affordable materials, which are important when you're building affordable housing.
And another thing to mention is how on the Pleasant Street side, the facade's organized in a much more human scale, and as you turn the corner, this fronts on a more transportation-oriented context, you know, the Mill River, the railroad, the bike path. So, we're working with a different scale and a different vocabulary to respond to that context.
And you can begin to see how we're trying to break down the size of this long facade. Remember, the, the building actually steps back on this facade, right at each of these brick features, and then there's a combination of a light and a darker, cementitious panel material. Once again, black double-hung windows. And this is the courtyard side, which is really hard to see from the street, and it's the most cost-effective exterior material, which will be a painted cement siding with, with some of the, the same base material that you saw on the bike trail side. This is the west side, it's very hard to understand in this image, so we'll, we'll look at this in the sketch, in the 3D model, I think you'll understand it more. But this is the courtyard here. This is the bike path, which you can see is raised up above the grade of the rest of the property. And why don't, why don't we go ahead and look at the rest of the, flip to the sketch-up model here quickly, Peter? Let's just walk through that, and then we'll go back to the landscape.
It's not going.
There we go. There we go. So, why don't you click to the next one? So, this shows the, the other side of this transition from the brick, face brick on the street side to the, the more prosaic material.
Let me back up one?
Nope, keep going.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so this is further back from the train station area. You can begin to see how the brick part, the brick wing walls carry that, the front facade material back into the rear of the property.
And also how the cornice line fits into the city skyline.
Okay, this now shows the, this is the west side of the building, so it makes a little more sense. This is the bike path, which is raised up, and you can see the first floor of the building is really behind an existing granite wall that's back here. And so, we've created a base that is reminiscent of the, the medium dark granite that exists right now.
And go back to the PDF?
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, now we'll turn it over to Naomi to talk about the landscape.
Do you want to push your buttons?
I'll stand here though if you want. So, I'm just going to start just by showing this existing plan that you are all familiar with, with the existing building and the predominance of the interior of the site being asphalt parking, with really no street presence with the large tree and actually railroad tie wall that elevates the site from, from the sidewalk. With the, the bus stop here, this is an area where people do congregate, and so we want to make sure that we keep an element of public gathering for that, as well as trying to relate to the existing end of the rail corridor here, which is also has benches and some other public amenity. So, this is the, the illustrative site plan showing the textures and, and the way in which materials will work, and I'll toggle back and forth just so that you can see a more technical plan along with the illustrative plan. One thing to note is that we have a three-foot grade change from this side of the site to the lower on the south, on the south here, and with keeping handicap accessibility, we actually have the sidewalk remaining at that sloped condition, and then we have, we have created a, an entry sidewalk along the building that is accessible, and therefore have created two different entries up into the building with steps, and using the same material and hopefully reclaimed some of the material from the existing granite wall that's along this edge here, and wrapping the building with that same material. And taking the idea of this more urban wild with the birch groves on the side of the building and again wrapping it here to make this entry, to signify the entry as something special, and then also making it different from what's a more public gathering on, on the, the north side of the site, which would be quite open with seat walls and some lower planting to encourage gathering in, on this side. The, this, this side of the site here is a more utilitarian side with dumpster and allowing for service to come in on the driveway and then back up and to be able to head back out. And we have planned for parking in here, which would be more temporary loading and unloading for people who, who live here, as well as for people who shop here. In the material selection, we've tried to keep things affordable, yet also thinking about the way in which stormwater would work. So, the parking here, we're proposing an eco paver, which would have porous center and, and planting. The same for this back area, which would be the main gathering space for folks who reside in, in the apartments, and having traditional mown lawn for part of, of the rear of the site, and then having a, a mix of a more taller grass with some wildflowers that would allow for this low point to take on water and, and temporary store up during storm, and having that, this whole edge along with the eco paver being a little bit more porous. The connection to Main Street and to downtown, very important, so we have a more casual path that leads through this area, as well as then also allowing for this area that's temporary loading and unloading and turning to function as a gathering plaza for people who, who live in the building to have an outdoor recreation and gathering space.
Can I jump in here?
Yep.
One of the things we also want to point out is that we provide a fair bit of bike rack along here that's under a One of the things we also want to point out is that we provide a fair bit of bike rack along here that's under a canopy. That dashed line is, some more intended along here. And depending on the future of how this bike path resolves itself, we may have more bike racks in this area as well.
So I'm just gonna move to, quick to some, some material. Again, this is the eco paver. The, the places that we would be using brick as paving are very specialized locations, so really to highlight the entry. Here, the, the site along the more public side would be a concrete, but we're proposing a concrete with interesting score joints to, to make it a little bit more special. This is the existing granite block wall along the rail corridor. So we're proposing that as a continued character along the front. And then some slides here just of some of the plant material. We do have, and I'll toggle back to the, to the plan. We do have some existing honey locust, we have some existing maple that we want to keep. So we want to add to those larger canopy trees along this side of the building to give a little bit of privacy and screening between the two, the two buildings. And then along the front of, of the building, having some lower-scale native service berry or some red bud for some of the gathering spots. And then along the rail corridor, having birch that can grow well, sucker, sort of take over in, in the tight, the space between the rail corridor and the building. And it would be, they would be planted within a gravel base so that there was more possibility for slower infiltration of stormwater. Some of our ideas about ground cover, the ground cover at the front of the building being, again, a grass, whether it was Pennsylvania sedge or another native ornamental grass. And then in the back, the combination of a mown lawn and a more native lawn that can take on water. And then this is just some detailed shots of, of the proposal for the front along Pleasant Street, showing the seat walls made out of the block granite. The, the stairs being brick, the, the corridor back to the residential entry also being brick. We have incorporated then seating from the upper sidewalk along the retail elevation, as well as in places from the street side. You can see this is a perspective here, again, with this is the entry to the building. We've got the vegetation and the character from the rail corridor side of things wrapping around the front of the building, and then the entrances into the storefronts.
Thank you.
Peter, maybe you should mention it about the reason for the special permit to push the building back from the typically required five.
Sure, there's a five-foot build-to line, and actually Carolyn was the source of this, where she suggested that we could address some of our accessibility issues by pushing the building further away and applying for the special permit. It also helps the city insofar as it creates more of a plaza experience along the now mostly state highway experience of Pleasant Street. I think this is where I get myself in trouble. Because it's a good way to bring up the dry topic of storm drainage.
Dry, come on.
Steve D'Ambarozio, professional engineer with GZI, was involved with the stormwater management of the site. The site is approximately thirty-two thousand square feet. In the existing condition, there's about sixteen thousand square feet of impervious. So it's half impervious in the existing condition. In the proposed condition, we're adding five thousand five hundred additional square feet of impervious. So we do need to do some stormwater management. What we're proposing is to take the roof runoff and send it into an underground infiltration system. That system is just gonna be a hundred and ninety linear foot, twelve-inch pipe in a stone trench, about three and a half feet deep, three and a half feet wide. We're collecting surface runoff through multiple catch basins. There's one here, here. And in the rear of the building, we're looking to pick up additional drainage with some smaller catch basins. And we're gonna route that towards the front of the building. This will be an outlet control structure where we'll try to backwater this system and infiltrate before overflowing into the, the city's existing drainage. What we're looking to do is connect into an existing stormwater pipe. We have to do a little bit more investigation on that pipe. If for some reason that pipe turns out to be insufficient or in ill-repair, part of the documents that were submitted to this after, or this evening, include an alternate design, which will basically eliminate this cut, this manhole and place a new manhole in the street. The reason why we're trying to use this existing service, or connection rather, is because this pipe within the street is a large pipe. It's a sixty-inch diameter pipe. So the size of your structure would have to be about an eight-foot diameter manhole. And we're looking to avoid that construction work in the street. So the thought is to get a little bit more information on this pipe, work with DPW, and make sure that, that this is a viable approach. In the event that it isn't, then we'll go this other route and include a large manhole here. So the system itself isn't gonna change, but the connection point may, if required. Other utilities, there's an existing sewer connection that we're looking to reuse. And with some back and forth with, or some recent correspondence with DPW, there is an existing four-inch water service that comes into the site here. We are proposing to use a new four-inch service off the existing line for domestic and then use the existing service that comes into the site for fire protection. DPW has requested that we use the exist, there's an existing six-inch tap, tapping valve and sleeve. They would like us to bring that connection to the site, tap off of that new connection with a domestic. So you'll have a six-inch fire service, and off of that will be the new four-inch domestic. And I apologize, the sewer is down here. This is the sanitary connection. These are the two connections, which are now gonna be shown as, as one connection. Can you jump in?
No.
Oh, okay. Gas will be connecting to the existing gas. And site electric, we're looking to remove a few of the, there's a utility pole in this area that we'll be looking to remove and bring new service into the site to a new transformer.
Underground service?
Yes, that'll be an underground service to a new transformer. And there's also a new emergency generator that's proposed here. And I believe that's it from the civil standpoint.
You're right. So. Back to the model. But not that view. Do you wanna, is that a good one to segue to, for you?
Sure, I mean, I think we're gonna.
Leave that one?
So I, just to, to wrap it up, as far as our work here, we felt like we wanted to end on what this does for Pleasant Street and especially for the public experience with the contextual, all, trying to, to meet a lot of, and, and blend with a lot of contextual elements of the, of the corridor, providing and really encouraging more street life here and really opening things up for public use and gathering.
Wanna go back? If you have another rendering after this, yeah? Okay, so that's basically all of the question. Hopefully you're gonna have sleep. But we're happy to answer questions.
Questions from the board. Peter, I've got, I've got one just to get us going. In the, in the back of the lot where the dumpsters are and so forth, what's the grading from the front of the street back to the dumpsters? Water, snow removal, you're talking about trying to get water back there and, and.
Where do you have that?
Yeah, it's pretty flat site.
You tell me if I can hear?
Exactly.
It's pretty much a flat site. I think there's a low point right in here, it's all within a few feet of each other. I know that we're intending for the snowplow storage, you know, snow storage to happen in this area as we have that opportunity, does that answer your question?
Basically, yeah, it's snow storage, snow removal, water. I'm just envisioning shooting them in winter.
Yeah.
Basically because of the grading.
So essentially, the retail floor is about six inches lower than the residential floor. All of the site drains away from either one of these. In this case, it drains towards the street, and this one it drains back towards this low point here. But it's a pretty flat site, really.
Are you doing the material reviews now, or standing up for a different part of the presentation?
Um, we brought these to answer specific questions if people have. I think we can go to the elevations and talk about where particular materials are in those elevations, if that's helpful.
I think it'd be great to talk about how you, you've got a variety of materials and where the transitions happen.
Go back to the power point.
Yeah, we can grab the material boards.
Do we wanna just go everybody all in together?
Yeah, that's fine.
So why don't we start with this, the main facade? So actually, yeah, I don't know where the best place for Peter to stand for everyone to see it, should he step up closer?
Uh, maybe she can let.
Yeah. Okay, so that, right.
Is that the?
These are the.
Star.
You have mortar samples on.
Yep. Saw that one coming.
And the cornice.
And the cornice above.
And the window, we've got a little corner sample, but basically the window's black in that. And then.
There we go.
Okay, this is actually the interior. Exterior, but this is black. It's a double hung window, we have a sample of the storefront.
The interior is black or the exterior is black?
Interior, exterior is black.
Both are, actually.
Both are, well.
Yeah, but on this one, because we couldn't get a sample, it was all black.
Okay, they're black, though.
They're black, the windows are black. And, and you saw on the other model that the storefront is slightly lighter, somewhat of a grade to work better with the cornice. And then.
Okay. These are the, you have a photo of the installation? Yes.
Let me just bring this up as well, so you can kinda see it together.
So, these are kind of a few enforced plank.
Up to the elevation that.
Yeah.
It's a vented rain screen installation.
I understand.
Just the lighter part, it comes in two different finishes, there's a more matte and a more rough finish. And it lays up very much like giant brick, and it has a lot of texture to it as it goes up.
This is a different poor color rendition, this is the, you do get that variation.
True, it's variegated.
Yeah, yeah, variegated. This is actually a photograph of a building near my, near our office in Cambridge. It's really a, it's a very rich surface, which these samples don't give you the sense of, which is why we made this one.
But as you see in the brick, there's sort of a gray iron spot in it, segues to the more gray.
As a builder, I'm just curious, are those applied like with the mortar, like a thinset mortar, like an applied?
It's a rain screen.
Oh, it's on a.
It's a rain screen.
Okay.
So it sits on, prolongs off.
Peter, can you flip around for the rest of it?
Pitching.
So the facade brick, and these are the cement panels. This is a photograph poorly, poor color rendition, but it shows the variation of the, the cement panels when they're installed together. So you get a very rich and non-monoch, monoch, monoch.
So these are in this area. That's theirs, these areas.
And the main facade of a car.
Where's the variegated part?
Well, all of this, it doesn't show up so much in the render here, but when it's installed, the real product has a lot of variety to it as it goes.
It doesn't show here.
No, it doesn't show so much here.
No, but in the picture, in the photograph, you can see there's.
In the photograph, it's a whole different color, too, though.
Right, so that's their star color. These are silver gray. But it has this, you know, it has the variation that you get in brick, but on just a much larger scale.
The four different colors are for the different setbacks.
Exactly.
Got it?
And they're actually, they're actually two different colors, and we've used them in kind of a varying.
Texture, then?
Yeah.
Yes.
Using both textures also?
Yes, we are, drawing both, yeah.
But each, each section has a, is uniform a texture, it's just, or they mix together?
They mix together like these.
So the textures are mixed within that?
Yeah. Which gives it a richness.
I'm just trying to understand that.
Leave it to the civil engineers to have the answer to your question. It's how they connect. So this is that. These things are six feet long and about six inches tall. And then they have a through connection.
Oh.
Onto the perdom.
And so they, and part of the reason we chose them is they have a more substantial look than.
Clapboard. Is that going anywhere?
That's on the inside, that's the courtyard side, that's the part you don't see from the street.
That's this side.
Thank you, ma'am.
Are, are you saying that on, Peter? Are you saying that on one, like on this surface, you're gonna get all four of those colors?
I'm saying that on that light gray field, you're gonna get both of these.
Both of these, but I'm not, not the.
And then the dark is this one?
The dark part, you're gonna get both of these.
Right, okay.
And then the blonde part, you'll get.
But there's as much, but within, within a piece of this, there's as much variation as there is on that photograph.
Yes. And the variation of texture also. That would really enrich it.
Can you talk about the courtyard side?
Um, yes.
Is that really what you're doing as, as a clapboard?
We felt that the, our understanding is that it wasn't part of the public way, so we don't have that one as resolved as we do the other parts.
Okay, it's not something that you could see from the street at all?
You'll get a glimpse as you're going down Pleasant Street.
The.
If you look past the trees and so on.
I just, uh.
But it's incidental, put it that way.
Considering the way the building is such a contemporary, look, I, I find the make-believe textured wood pattern doesn't look very good on that clapboard material. And I, I would sense a flat material would go more with the nature of that point of view.
It would go that, sure.
Yeah.
I'd agree with that.
Even those hardy panel systems, like the, the.
The commercial hardy panel, the water systems.
Texture is no way to go on this. It, it just, you know, that just looks like raw wood out there. But I, I think a smoother texture, the hardy plank type look.
So you only see a very.
Yeah, this is, this is, this describes what you can see of that. So you can see it in the back, it's kind of. This area that I'm pointing at with the, the cursor is, is the cement variegated panels that we're presenting. And then in the far back, we've got a combination of those, the darker of the horizontal cement panels. And then this lighter material is the cement clapboards, which I, I agree would look very, much more appropriate in a smooth finish.
Excuse me, what would you say is more appropriate?
Smooth versus the.
You said that a smooth is more appropriate, yeah, right. You're saying a clapboard, but you have the clapboard within those panelized, the vertical.
Yeah, we were.
Yes, exactly.
Detail where four feet, there was a vertical aluminum. So that it doesn't take on quite the house rhetoric. It has a more.
So, so in. Yeah, perhaps, so that's.
Let's set up a gym.
But you can, you can see in this view, we're trying to relate to that, to the approach that's been used everywhere, really, in turn-of-the-century buildings or before, with the, the beautiful face brick that transitions to the more basic affordable material. And in our case, the more basic affordable material is this rather than brick.
But then once you turn that corner, you get into a courtyard, we go to a clapboard.
Does that material just come in gray?
This one here?
Yeah, or are there choices of colors beyond gray?
There are choices, eight. Peter told me I can't use lime green. What are you laughing? And then there's also a white that is how to keep clean. There's some reds and some browns.
Peter, there's, on that sample board on the left, exposed fasteners, is that?
Your left, this one.
Right there, yeah. So every one of those panels has an exposed?
They would have probably six.
You can see the natural.
Oh, okay, I couldn't see it.
And it actually adds a little bit of detail and shadow line, which is really part of what enlivens the surface.
But they're proud of the, just like that, just that, that's okay.
Sort of a bat of shit text.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could I see that close up?
Yes, sure.
Can you show the south-facing facade again?
Yes.
Yes.
On the power point?
Uh, yeah.
So, so this is, these things are going to be on this side and on this side?
Primarily on this side.
On this side, but not on...
This is the clapboard, set up in full foot length.
The areas behind the buff are not going to be quite as uniform as they appear.
Exactly, that's, that's what we're trying to show with this. And that's the limitation of our rendering there, but they will be, the, the surface is much more varied like this.
Both in texture and in tone?
Yeah, exactly.
In texture because you have the two different kinds, right?
Yeah, this is, these are the, right, you get, actually the difference in texture is what makes the difference in color.
Right.
And these colors were really chosen because as much as anything, they work better with the brick palette that we're working with. And the grays and the, in the cornice and then the grays in the storefront.
Do you think that standing a hundred or 200 feet away from the building, one would notice the difference in textures?
I don't, I don't think you notice the difference in texture, I think you notice the difference in color. There appeared to be slight variation in the color.
I mean, I'm looking at, at the rendering here, if that's what it's called, I'm really struck by how uniform and, if you don't mind my saying, ugly it is. In my opinion, everyone has a different opinion. I, I, I don't like it at all, but that's not part of the planning board's purview, I guess.
That's this side of it.
Well, speaking of opinions, I hate to say this, but this reminds me of the Borowski House on Elm Street, where they bricked in the porch and caused the whole Elm Street district to come about. Because when you get bricks that vary a lot in color, it, it really, I think, looks pretty tacky. And this is going in that direction. And it's, if it was, if it was a matter of, like, variation between the textures, that's a very slight color variation. But that is a very big color variation. And it reminds me of the, of the, the multicolored brick.
Salt and pepper and...
Right, that I think...
That I think was a different scenario because that was just, it did not match in any way the existing brick of the house. This is, this is all new.
This reminds me of that.
I, I...
I think your, your sample does you a disservice because it really points out what Joe's talking about here. I think with the basic colors here, it's not going to be as egregious.
No, no, it's, this reddish color is...
I would not have brought that piece of paper.
I think...
So we'll put that away.
Are the bricks, as it were, are they that size? Is this material, or is it long?
It's long.
It's long, that's what I thought.
They're, they're, so they're not brick-like, they're different than brick. They're six feet long.
Like plants?
Is each one of these things, so you're going to assemble, are these like 12 feet long or 18?
Six, six feet long.
Six feet long. So within each one of these six feet long pieces, are they consistent in color?
They're like...
These are the two...
In color, yes, in texture, there's some variety, which affects how colorful they appear. Or affects, it adds the variation. These are the colors, right here, these are the only two colors that come in. And this is the lighter one.
The photo is deceiving because it shows each piece, there's some modulation in the color in each individual piece. And what you're saying is that each individual piece is a consistent color, but the texture may vary a little bit.
Right, it has to do with the technology of printing that photograph.
Right.
Yeah, and that's basically the range that you're going to see. And you're correct, each piece will have a consistent matte.
If I'm, if the variation is going to be as much as it is on those two pieces, I'm not going to have any problem with it at all. If the variation is going to be as much as it is on that photograph, I am going to have a problem with it.
Now, this is, this is why we're bringing the, the samples that we've got, is to show that, but...
Well, I, I guess I'd like to say that I, I think it's a very thoughtful design. I appreciate how much time you spent thinking about the history of North Hampton and trying to blend in historical features with modern features. There are a few things that I would like to see perhaps thought a little more about. The prominence of that front facade is great. I'm a little bit concerned that the facades that step back from it are actually taller. And while that's a good view, where it almost appears like it's the same height, when you look at it in elevation and, and certain views from the side, it appears that the pieces that are behind the prominent facade are bigger.
They are slightly taller.
But by a matter of three feet out of 60, so it's 60 to 63 feet.
It just might be one of those things that, you know, the architect walking down the street notices and nobody else does.
Fair enough.
Like in that elevation, aren't, isn't everything at the same maximum height except for the elevator house?
Yeah, pretty much.
And that doesn't bother me because that's behind, but that, the sort of the first fin is taller. And I think on the other side, the, the other fin is slightly taller. And you kind of want the cornice to be something that really sits on top. Right, that really wants to be the top element. And you, you've just snuck the other things up above it, which makes architects go, or at least this one gets a little...
I'm also curious about the mast that you show there. Is it a flagpole or is it just a decorative element?
Yes, yes, and yes. Peter intends a flag. So yes, it's a flagpole.
Um, could you talk a little bit more about that facade? That was another piece that I was a little bit concerned about, that it's so blank in comparison, even though it is stepped back. You said that there might be some art there and I might feel better if I knew what was going to be on that face.
We can tell you where to hide. So actually, that brings up a good point. This is, we're at schematic design because Hap is going to spend a year fundraising. We wanted to get in front of you folks, get issues out early and get them in the cost estimates so that they can confidently fundraise after. So we're at a schematic design level and we don't have things resolved to a level that I think you're used to seeing. And I'm afraid it's going to be a bit before we can give you that kind of specific detail.
You know, I have an issue with actually doing a designer, a mural on that. I think it's kind of like, you're trying to like decorate.
Architecture.
You know, you've got a really strong building there and you don't know what the art's going to be. And it's something you're stuck with for a very long time. You know, I could see it being something like the Smith Art Facade where they have banners that are changed.
Yep.
But to have a permanent installation on there, I think, depending on the politics or the look of it, you know, you're imposing an image on people.
Did you get him to say that?
He's an artist, but I, I do think, you know, murals have their places. A lot of times they're on facades or in alleyways or things where in your face.
Yeah.
I think it's an issue.
Well, that's a good point, in terms of the changeability or impermanence of it. It's envisioned that Hap would have a presence on the selection committee and that there'd be a theme about the rail trail and the river and so on. So it's an informed piece of art, but you're right, there isn't absolute control over it.
And maintenance of that as well. It's not like that is something that's permanent, perhaps.
Good idea.
But a blank wall is permanent.
Which facade are you talking about, the art? Is it this one facing Pleasant Street or the one facing south and...
It's the one there.
Right there.
It cries for banner type treatment, temporary, not permanent. But if we could take a look at the bike trail elevation again.
The south one or the end one?
Yeah.
The south, yeah. I have a problem with the, not with the differentiation, the different colors and all of that. I think that the various elements are too plain. And I would prefer seeing it across the top, maybe introducing the darker color to create sort of a masonry effect, cornice line.
So right, right across there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to terminate that, because you've got the blank building, but there's no differential detailing that would separate, or separation of detailing is the constant.
So almost an element like this that I'm pointing at across the...
Yeah, in other words, I, I would just run maybe a couple of courses of the dark along those lighter panels, walls, just to give it a cap.
Yeah, well, and that's, that...
Put a cap on the queen.
That relates to how we're handling, I mean, down here, we've got the base element.
Same thing down there.
And we're actually spacing those a little wider so it has a bit of the rustication, so that...
Can I, can I, I'm sorry, there's one person who's been in the audience that would really like to say something.
I actually sit on that side of the table also.
Oh, okay.
Can you go back to the rendering where it showed from the south as you're approaching on Pleasant Street? And you see that whole corner of the building?
Sure.
Rendering a model?
Actually, in the sketchup model. My, my comment on this is that, to me, this is a major gateway to North Hampton. And we have two very big blank walls. And the, the hope of future public art there, to me, is not enough that we really need to do something to celebrate the entrance to North Hampton via more differentiation in those facades.
As perhaps additional windows, is that kind of what?
Yes, it's something to make it look more like the rest of downtown as opposed to being blank. And then the other comment I had, which is actually a planning board side of the thing, is I was kind of hoping for larger street trees because that Pleasant Street in general is kind of losing its street trees as time goes by. And those are fairly small there in front, and I was kind of hoping for some more street trees on Pleasant Street.
And how, how big will these get, Naomi, roughly? I mean, they will be, remain small?
No, they're, I mean, they're birches, they will get, they will get big.
Oh, I thought you said they were emilyne here.
Yeah, well, the ones on the, on the other side?
That's these little ones over here.
That steps back, those would be the emilyne here or the shad or the red bud.
Okay.
What sides will they be when planted? Or is that too much of a detail for you to comment?
I mean, I think hoping 18, 20 feet.
Then my, my last comment would be that I'm a little nervous about the entry walk, the plazas, if you will. Only in that because of the split in elevation, I'm afraid it's going to end up like the sidewalk across the street from Fitzwillies, where it's actually split into unmanageable pieces, as opposed to what you're, you're presenting to us, which would be a larger plaza entry space.
Mm-hmm. I think we've been sensitive to that, at least in terms of the comfort of the place as you sit in it, as well as the ease with which you navigate through it.
How wide is the sidewalk that's shown with the two people on it?
It's about seven feet there. It's currently three feet of brick and three feet of pavement. So we've taken the brick out and added a foot, so it's seven feet wide, as illustrated.
And this, which is part of the reason why we've pushed the building back, so we have more breadth of space at the front, because the sidewalk's very narrow there.
How large is the, like the corridor between the, the sitting wall and the facade? That walkway?
Is that, that's in your, just go ahead to that. I think we've got some, the section diagrams. By the way, these section diagrams that we're showing right, oops, did I miss it? Um, sorry. They're in your package that we, we've handed out. They were submitted, I think, a couple, yeah, they're in the package right now.
The street level sidewalk is much larger than the corridor way.
Yeah, it varies, and some of it is planting alongside, some of it is the plaza going back to the sitting wall.
So can you repeat that? So it's seven feet between the, where the granite wall would be, or the sections of granite between the granite and the curb?
Um, I think probably a better way to put it is it's at least seven feet. If you take that seven feet of concrete sidewalk, that would continue all the way through or get wider. There are places where it reaches back still further to the granite wall and the steps up to the next block. Can I just...
So it's, it...
Yeah.
So this section in here is the seven feet. And then we have, this is a five foot space in here. And then we've got the space for planting and the retaining wall. Is that correct? You're doing that?
14, two, I need to look at the plan.
I'm not sure they really qualify for a plaza description. I'm just worried about, A, the seven feet is the existing sidewalk, which when you walk down there now, for the most part, so it's really all we're going to have is a sidewalk. And then some planting button in the doorway area widened out just to get into the door, which is no different than a sidewalk and a new door.
So I think we were thinking that this with its open corner and then this with its open corner, the bike, the bike racks, and then along in here, that this was more of the open area. And it starts to get tighter down here in the, you know, as you come in through here to signify this residential entry. I mean, this is still a pretty broad opening here. And this is where the handicap accessible path through here also then comes out to land on this larger brick area. I, I don't, I would, I would agree with you that, that this section in here, where it is broken up with walk, wall, and walk, is not, is not plaza. But I do feel like this area and this area have, have that feel.
Are there any benches in the front there between the building facade and the street?
Yes. The, the walls.
The granite walls.
The granite walls.
So if you look at the, just to give you a point of reference, this, so this part right here is wider than the existing sidewalk. And then we get a little more breadth in, it's kind of hard to do this without shaking a bit, but a little more physical width where the planting is, the seating wall, and then five feet. So it's, it's going to be, it's, it doesn't set back quite as far as the existing building, the existing Hampton Courts, which I think is 18 feet or something like that.
The only, the only thing I might suggest is that for planning board members is when you walk down the sidewalk, people tend to walk on the concrete part and the brick part is where the trees are. And if you notice on here, that you've got, if we're walking on the edge of the curb and the trees are reversed, and then when you get to the other end, you have to swap out and go back to the normal North Hampton sidewalk layout.
I was actually going to ask, did you look at that option of putting the, the planting bed along the street and having the two hard surfaces next to each other, which might make it feel more like a larger hard surface, even though there's an elevation difference? Just, it is a very busy street and it might be nice to buffer pedestrian and vehicle. But that's not our...
You know, I'm afraid with that situation, that you're doing what they did across the Fitzwillies, because if you have the two hard surfaces next to each other, then you have to wind up with a railing there. You know, because of the accessibility, if you're going to have a step there. So you need a railing. So you're taking that larger expansive and breaking it up anyway.
Well, the, but you have, if you still have that brick wall, the seating wall there?
Oh, I, I, oh, I see, you, you want to leave the, the wall as a separator.
Right.
So you essentially want to flip what's concrete and what's...
I'm just asking if it was something you reviewed and if that was an...
We went through a lot of studies, it's probably one of them, but...
And I, I guess the other option would be to reduce the, which we did talk about, was perhaps the, the grass or the ornamental grass area could be hard pavement with street grates for the trees, which would give, which would create a broader walking area.
Yeah, there might be a way of doing it that better maintain the urban...
Do you have a plan view of the existing conditions to get the vernacular, before and after of the sidewalk?
I, I press that, I'm sorry.
So, let's see, do I get it? Yes. Existing, there's a little bump right here for bus stop. And then that six feet is both a three foot brick area and a three foot concrete area.
Right, with, with a, with a railroad tie retaining wall on the left. So it's, it's quite narrow. That's part, part of the reason why I feel so treacherous walking in that area, because it's six feet wide and you're bounded by parking and a railroad tie retaining wall.
You had a photo of that, didn't you, on the presentation? Can you look at that?
Actually, we have a bunch of photos in the back of this. Want to go to those?
So there, there you can see the retaining wall.
There's that retaining wall. And so there's six feet of sidewalk right in here between the curb and that retaining wall. So part of what we're trying to do, obviously, we're getting rid of the retaining wall, creating a planting zone that adds another about four feet or five feet.
This is actually a great photograph to illustrate what we were just talking about. For instance, that light pole that's right there?
Mm-hmm.
Those bases are a couple of feet around and they're right out next to the street. And so what you're now have is a sidewalk that's out there, is it easy? One of the issues in North Hampton for many people is trying to negotiate around street signs. And the, the lights in many cases, because the sidewalks aren't wide enough. And I'm just wondering if we're recreating that situation here.
So in your mind, creating an even wider sidewalk addresses some of those issues? To the extent that we push the building back further or to the extent we narrow up the plantings in front?
I think the streetscape is really important, put it that way. And I guess I, I would look forward to maybe...
You're saying here, Rick, so for instance, the trees here, as you move north, the trees are on the right, sidewalk's on the left.
Correct.
And then when so, when you come south, you have to...
You would, it would...
Plug it.
You're saying keep it the same?
Well, I'm not saying necessarily to say keep it the same, I think there's other options. Or like perhaps maybe the whole thing is paved with tree grates and things like that. But I'm worried about ending up too narrow with the lights and the, and the parking signs and the meters and everything else there, that it's going to be hard to get around it and not really fulfilling what we'd like to get in a fresh design.
I think it's good to consider continuity of streetscape for the... I think it's good to consider continuity of streetscape for the areas that are north coming into your site, rather than jog over to a different pattern. You just, and I, I don't care for the, the grass or the plant materials there. I would rather see trees in, you know, Nina Foundry grates or something like that, because that creates a little bit more of a walkable surface. And I think just the maintenance of those small plants, planting strips out front is going to be very problematic. And I, I would rather see more of a walkway, but also a sense of continuity. When you come south on Pleasant Street, that you're not going into a different environment, but to have a continuity.
So this is the neighboring building. And so what they have is they have the, here's the, the curb. And they actually do have that six-foot sidewalk between their trees and the edge. So it, where it gets a little funny is they have this, this planting area that, that kicks out. But they, you do, there's that, this is, this is actually what we're proposing, is the same idea, that the trees are set back from the edge.
But you don't have that much distance between the tree and your building.
That's right.
Correct.
Yeah, I think a little more hardscape would be...
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? We're actually not on the planning board side of things. We haven't actually opened it up to the public yet. So, Rick, I'll take your comments through the, through their side of the table.
Pretending to sit over there if there are any...
But I'd like to open it up to the public. But before we do, any other questions from the board? Peter, could you speak a little bit about the lighting, the exterior lighting?
I can speak to the bit from the building. Yes. It's funny, you should bring that. We're intending fixtures similar to this. It's a very narrow, one or two-degree splay vertically that's captured at the cornice line. And then below, unlike in this photograph, it's a more generous, I think twenty-five or thirty-foot, thirty-foot, yeah, right, degree splay. And it's all calculated to meet the zoning requirements around lighting and dark sky compliance. In terms of what's on the building, and I don't think we have a slide of what we're intending on the site. I know that was in...
Yeah, it's in your package.
Yep.
Right.
Which is a, a full-mounted fixture. And there's also a, a light distribution plan that came as well in the package a little bit later, which is this document that we've got.
So that basically articulates the fifteen, seven, three, and one foot candle. Do you want to review where they're located?
Yeah.
So assure me that with the parking along the side of your asphalt drive, that the fire truck can still be around the back. I don't, I was looking for dimensions for that opening.
Okay. Well, in some ways, if you'll forgive the pun, I can drive around that issue because we've spoken with the fire department and they don't want to bring their truck back there. They're going to stay on the street and they would come to the parking lot behind, and then they would deploy personnel with hoses along the sides of the building. They don't want to get their vehicles inside there. There's an intent...
Comes down.
I'm sorry?
In case it comes down.
Yes, there's access from the rail trail. So what we've sized that for are things like FedEx trucks, something to haul the trash away, moving vans for residents, et cetera.
And the parking along that panel is...
In here?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Is open paper?
Yeah, it's the...
The, the, those eco block, the...
Those guys in the middle.
And you've got, in the front of that, between that, that car that's closest to the street and the street, you've got a open square concrete area. Tell me what, what's going on there.
So that's the, that's the parklet with, and I'll, I'll move to this, there's, there are two retaining walls. We have, then at the neighboring building, the pavement actually slopes up. And so part of mitigating the grade here is, we're putting, using this retaining wall and we have two steps down into this parklet. The, the sidewalk would continue unimpeded by any steps. But then this is a little recessed area with two seat walls. And this is where the, the smaller scale planting is. So a little gathering spot there.
But you are looking at smaller scale...
The, the proposal was for some smaller scale flowering trees in there.
Because it does, that has the possibility of softening the view of that adjacent building that you were talking about when you come in. So a, a larger tree there could, could be considered not for the parklet version, but for the, up against the other building, which is much more your worries than ours. But we get planting issues.
So there is quite a large honey locust, right, that's on this corner right now. You can see?
Yeah, I did see it in the other one. And it is the one that's back in line with the others that you...
It's about right where I have the little hand of this cursor, sort of off-screen, but it's back from the edge of the sidewalk, floating in the middle of that, of that, the entry plaza there.
I'm staying with this plan view. How visible are the dumpsters going to be? I have visions of the dumpsters at the Smith College Student Center, which, you know, from Elm Street, weren't terribly well received.
Yeah. Those are, sorry, I'm going to the wrong... We don't have our...
I don't have that. Because in plan view, they look...
Are they screened?
Yes. So...
It's right in there. Yep.
So that's a, that's a fence or that's a screening of some sort.
Very similar to the material on the building.
Okay.
Same slat, separated.
And it sits in front of the dumpsters?
Around. Yeah. So it's all sides and taller than...
So how do they enter the dumpsters?
So it's a gate?
Oh, it's a gate?
Yeah.
Oh, with the wood material from the back?
Yeah.
So I don't know if there's still question about the lighting, but I can point on, on plan where they're going to be. We have the, we just have five fixtures. And there are two that are along this parking edge. And then there are two along this path. And then one along in this entry area on the side.
And let me sort of clarify to some of you, the ones up here have asymmetric throw, so they, they sort of have houseside cutoffs to block anything going off the property. Same thing down in this area. But the two out in here have more of a uniform pool effect.
So there, there are some issues brought by planning board staff regarding the lighting. You've seen those, don't have any issues with those?
I don't think so. In terms of the wattage of the...
Right.
Yes. No problem with that. In fact, we were going to put it in there, but she got...
I'm not familiar with that one. The upper left-hand corner, where the walk path goes, are those trees? Is that a very dense area?
So there are existing very, very large and, and tall honey locusts that are, that are quite limbed up. And, and so there, it's a mature grove that we want to accentuate and, and add to. But currently, there is a, a path that...
Yep.
...walks through there, cut through sort of to, back to the, to Main Street. And it's quite easy to walk under them.
Yeah, my, only, my input was that you mentioned two lights bordering the grass area on that path. But is there a security, you know, a security issue of going into that darker area at night? I mean, since it's on your property, don't you think that should be illuminated further in under those?
Well, actually, there's a fixture intended here that has a big butterfly splay. So part of it reaches all the way out into here without spilling over onto the adjacent property. And then, of course, the other part of it goes this way.
And unfortunately, aren't there lights in the parking lot?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Alana, are you okay with us opening up to the public? Any other questions by the way?
Any other questions over here?
Okay, so we're going to open this up to public comment. If anyone out there wants to speak, if you could raise your hand, I'll call you. Come up to the podium and just give us your name and address, and we'll take it from there.
I'll just sit there.
Yep, come on up.
I just had a couple of questions. I, I really liked the front facade.
For the record, Tom Douglas.
Oh, Tom Douglas, sorry. So I think the front of the building's really successful. And I came in a little bit late, so I might have missed it. But the, the screen wall, the big wall that you were talking about that has art on it, I didn't, does that stick out completely? This, it's a freestanding tall wall that you walk under, is that what it is? I didn't fully understand. So, but let me, I have just had two questions. That, could you further explain it? And also, there's got to be a bus stop along there somewhere, so I didn't, I didn't catch that either.
I don't know if that's going to get relocated or not, but yes, there is one there. And the intention is for that used to still remain. Probably no, no, no location.
That's just the end wall of the, oh, okay, I see.
Yeah.
But I, I, I do agree with the comment that a cornice along the, the rest of the building that isn't still in keeping with the front of the building, I think would be a nice addition to cap it off and make it less, I mean, it's, it's modern, but it's, I don't think modern in a good way. And you can do a modern cornice that would help blend it in for the rest of the area.
Okay. Anyone else?
Are we still allowed to make comments?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, could you go to the other side, the wing wall on the other side, the smaller wing wall? Wing wall. That, that wall completely is freestanding. It doesn't, the, the rear portion is set back.
Correct.
Oh, I see. It's a tri, it's, yeah.
That's where the stairwells are.
Can you go up a little bit? Yeah, I see.
You can see there...
There's a stairwell in that.
Yep. At the end of the corridor.
You can see there how much the, the wing wall does come above the facade. And this is what you were talking about, was bringing that down.
Well, and I think the whole, several comments about continuing the cornice, so, I mean, I understand sort of the idea of the fractured fins and, but something that pulls the whole thing together.
Well, in fact, it does. And that...
Yeah, we do have that feature in the back.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, the, the continuous, that small wing wall versus the large wing inside, I think you understand this, and maybe it was your intent. But to me, it makes the, the building kind of look like a base relief, like it's kind of like stuck on a painting or on a wall. You know what I mean? Because it is the appearance that this facade is just, you know, sitting on there.
You're speaking particularly of this end.
That wall, yeah.
Yeah.
Because the other one has more mass and...
It does.
...articulation with the lines and the flagpole on.
Yeah, but some of what we're doing also is we're lacing together, like, you know, lacing your fingers together, some of the brick as it goes to the back and some of the other material coming forward.
Right.
And here...
Yeah, none of that.
It just transitions, you know, one to the other.
Or it doesn't.
It doesn't. So they have a nice little dialogue here, but we're still figuring it out. It's a good point.
Yeah. It's an anomaly to me to the rest of the building. It's just too plain.
Yep.
Can you just clarify too? It looks like you're proposing gray on the interior courtyard as opposed to yellow.
Oh.
Or is it?
Well, we're intending a beige buff color that, at least at the moment, echoes the brick color.
On, on the clavards.
Yeah. And I apologize, it's not rendering that way on the screen. Our friend technology.
Any other questions from the public? We can leave the public comment open for a little bit as we talk before we close it. Any other questions from the board?
I'm just not sure if I remember what the response was to Rick, it's Rick, right? About the large blank space as you enter Northampton on, coming from south Pleasant Street. I understand that art is the desired outcome, but that seems to be somewhat uncertain.
I actually think both walls are relatively blank.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it's a big space with a lot of, with more blank than not.
Yeah, I think part of what Rick's responding to is how, you know, as a gateway, you know, that's part of this edge, urban edge. It has a strong presence as you come up Pleasant Street vehicularly, and as you come up the railroad tracks and the train. So how those appear is kind of, one of the first impressions, fair way to describe it. And, you know, the hope is that eventually, there is something there that is of more interest, that announces Northampton as an arts community in a way that isn't explicit, you know, great big A R T, kind of like on the railroad bridge where there's various aspects.
Is there some reason that you didn't put a second row of windows inside the first one?
Um, yeah. There are bathrooms in here. But we could do something that carried that vocabulary across.
Like it wants to have windows there.
So you're, you're talking about in this stack right here?
Right.
Yep. This is in the corridor, so there's daylight that comes inside. And then there's an apartment here, and there's an apartment here. The main window's facing this way. That's the laundry area. So you're talking a stack of windows.
Facing, it, it just wants to have windows.
Okay. And would you say the same of this?
Except it's not quite as prominent.
So we can compromise on one side, not the other? Upper floor, lower floor?
By the way, my, having made a critical comment about the side of the building, I just want to say, I think the front looks really nice.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to throw out there, so in terms of process, I mean, you guys have very different jurisdictions. I don't know if, if Central Business wants to have more discussion about how you hash out these details, if you feel like you want to see other plans. You know, maybe about the windows before you make any kind of decisions. So there, there are a couple of options. Either you both can hash out your permitting, you know, paths together, or we can, you can adjourn and go upstairs to second floor City Hall and continue your meeting there. Wayne Fiden is here, so he can go up and, you know, be staff presence there for you if you want to do that. Or, I know that splits the applicant a little bit, but, you know, it's up to, you know, you guys.
Let me, let me ask how, how much of a hardship it would be, and I know this is pretty far in the future anyway, how much of a hardship it would be to have another hearing where you come back with that to show us what your cornice would look like and any potential changes in the windows or the...
I guess, let me, can I ask Carolyn a question in respect to that? Because this is, as Peter said, this is schematic design so that they can get through the permitting process, so the building, so the HAP can raise money and, and get funding. So since it's not a fully developed design, which is what we're used to seeing, can we issue a permit with a condition that prior to the building permit being pulled, they come back and show any revisions and updates or clarifications to the design?
You could do that. I would suggest if you were going to do that, more specificity, you know, if you want to see windows and you want to see the cornice wrapping, specify, you know, before a permit is requested, that they need an amendment from you all as it relates to those elements that you want to see adjusted, as opposed to just saying, show us your final design. I, I mean, it sounds like you have some interest in directing some modifications. So I guess I would, you know, phrase it in that context. But yes, it's possible to give a conditional order.
Let me, let me say, I'm, first of all, I would, I want to compliment you on this thing. This is going to be a huge and very positive addition to Pleasant Street. I, I really think you've done a very fine job with it. As far as I'm concerned, I would be willing to vote to grant the credit and to, to the permit based on what's here. And if you decided that you wanted to take some of the suggestions, you could come back before us and, and have another hearing. But if other, if others of us feel that we have to see a change of design first, and that's, then maybe we should have a second hearing when, when the divine, design has been more finalized. But you're, you should, you should know that the direction you're going in is going to win an approval.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, well, I would agree with Joe that this is almost treating this like a preliminary design review and sort of, you know, taking a look at the concept and saying you guys are aimed in the right direction.
are aimed in the right direction, here are some of our thoughts, you've come back with some feedback on that, but we definitely don't have a, a final document, a final design. And you would be going back and, you know, refining this. But I think conceptually, you're headed in a very good direction, and I'm very excited about the project. I agree with Joe, this will be a huge addition to that part of Pleasant Street. There are some details here, and I think that, you know, if we could say this is sort of a preliminary review, you've got our thoughts, you've got marching orders, so to speak.
Is that, I'm sorry.
No, I think that the issue is that they need a permit in order to move forward with funding.
Could I ask you that, I mean, is our approval not prohibited fundraising or whatever is necessary for this project? I mean, if the planning board passes their part of it to allow that to go forward, would it be an inconvenience to come back to us with just the final details?
Well, actually, two aspects here, one of which is, they have to compete for funding. So the more permits we have in place, the more, well, you can probably speak to-
Sure, yeah, I mean, Peter was, Peter was right on about that. I mean, you know, as we approach state funding sources and, and others that are needed for the low-income housing tax credits and the state soft debt and so forth, to the extent that we have a planning board approval and CBAC approval, even if it means coming back to fine-tune the details, that sets us in better stead with the funding sources that we need. So I would encourage going in that direction, you know, to, to be able to represent to the state that we've got the approvals in hand, coming back for the fine-tune of the details doesn't present an issue.
On, on our end, I think from the planning board sense, we have enough information to, even with conditions, to finalize our end of it tonight. Do you need more time, as Carolyn said, to excuse yourselves to come up with those specific items that you wanna attach as conditions to the permit, or?
Well, let me propose to the board, I think the, the three things that I saw from the, the comments was resolution of the blank walls, the two primary, the south and, I guess that would be southeast blank wall, resolution of the cornice, both the height of the primary one and then cornice wrapping around the entire building, and a little more clarification on the, on the materials in the courtyard, at least how you would see them from the street.
Materials in the landscape or materials-
On the building.
So I guess what, what, in principle, you're saying we would-
I, I guess I would approve it with the condition that-
With those conditions.
That they come back and show us resolution on those details.
That would be great.
So, on the cornice, the blank walls, and what about the window, and including potentially windows on the-
Potentially additional windows.
Both, both blank walls, the south and the north.
I don't, I don't know that the blank walls have to have windows in them, I think that they need to have some articulation. So I don't wanna direct that they have to put windows in.
Should we close the public hearing before we make a motion?
Not necessarily, I mean, it depends on whether you, I mean, yes, before you make a motion, you should close the public hearing, but, you know, while you're in this discussion, you could certainly keep it open.
How does the board feel about making that sort of proposal?
Well, I'll, I'll-
You think so?
We can come up with a motion that does that.
Yeah, I think so.
I guess then, can we, can we close the public hearing and make a motion?
So moved.
Does anyone wanna try to craft that? Should I craft it?
I would, I would move that we give a conditional approval to this project with a condition that the applicant come back before us and address the issues. One, a cornice going around the top of the building. Two, window treatment on, and articulation on blank walls. Three, the height of the blank walls being above the level of the cornice. And four, the material on the courtyard side of the building, because we don't like the gray, the grained material that's shown there.
So, can I, second?
I'll read second.
All in favor? And I guess, so for that, we, we are, shall we, can I get a motion, can we adjourn?
You can.
Are, are we supposed to move up to the-
Oh, you wanna adjourn, adjourn to upstairs, you have that informal discussion.
We will adjourn upstairs.
Okay. So, planning board is still open. While the architectural board is, is heading out, I wanna go to Peter, computer's still there. So public comment's still open, you received the comments from the staff, I just wanna go over to them with you before we make them conditions. I just want, make sure you're aware of them.
Mark, in terms of the landscaping configuration on the front, is that under our jurisdiction?
Special permit, so everything is fair game.
Especially as it relates to trying, they're asking that special permit for the-
Oh, the setback.
-bigger setback for the purposes of creating a plaza, so it absolutely is within jurisdiction to-
That includes the, the walkway, the walkway issue.
Right. And I also, there were a couple of com, additional comments from DPW that I got this afternoon that, you know, it's quiet.
All right, so maybe I'll go through these and then you can, and you can hit those. So, Peter. Peter. I know, I know. So, Peter, I wanna go over the, I understand you've received the comments from the staff, I just wanna go over them with you before we make them a condition as far as approving our permit. Let me just hit these, and if you have any questions-
Great, 'cause I'm not sure that we're talking about the same set of comments.
That's why I wanna make sure.
Thank you.
First up, two weeks prior to the building permit, construction docs reviewed and approved by the DPW showing final conditions of stormwater pipes, inert steps for infiltration basins and leaching catch basin.
This would be before construction permit?
Yes.
Yeah.
Two, dumpster pad pitched toward driveway to drain manhole number three.
Yep.
Three, front sidewalk pitched toward north or south to prevent ponding in front of the seating area.
I think it pitches east.
It does.
As long as it doesn't pond.
It won't pond.
It pitches, it pitches towards the street.
Okay. Prior to building permit, video confer, video confirmation of condition of storm drain manhole from, drain manhole number three to city drain must be performed, any upgrade, repair, replacement to ensure function of drainage from site must be done.
City pays for it?
It doesn't say that here.
Okay.
All lights must be color temp of 3,000 K or less.
Yep.
Wall lights intended to wash the facade must be directed so that the illumination is cut off by the roof eaves, illumination shall be cut off no further from the building than the midpoint of the eve.
No further than, so you're talking about horizontally from the face of the facade going towards the street?
Correct.
Yeah, we can do that.
Wall lights shall be shown, will, shall be as shown on the spec sheet, dual metal halide with no greater than 1% uplighting for wall wash.
The reality is, in a couple of years, those are probably gonna be LEDs, just 'cause of how the technology's changing, but it would have the same photometrics.
Okay.
In other words-
Basically, this is for dark sky compliance, right?
Yeah, so-
But it's just, the reason why it says metal halide is because that, that's specified in your application.
Yes.
So it's just referencing what you've presented-
Yep.
So that it's clear which light-
Yep.
...permit is addressing.
Okay.
You don't have to maintain a metal halide light.
Then we have no problem with that.
Wall lights shall not exceed 39 watt bulb as shown in the options.
Yep, we can do that.
If the city pulls the retaining wall back from the Pleasant Street sidewalk at the rail trail, rail trail entrance, the applicant will modify the entry plaza path to the residential entrance substantially consistent with the plan sheet L 2.02 Landscape Concept Alternate.
Alternate, yep.
Yep.
And in deference to the fundraising and so forth and the timescale, we, the permit would be granted with a condition with a three-year construction timeline instead of a standard two-year, because, you know, to bump it out, because you're at the early stages in schematic phase.
Appreciate that. Can we come back to you, such as the prior applicant, to extend that if we need to?
Yes, but I would recommend that, unlike the prior applicant, to get here.
Yes! I'm with you on that one, too.
And so DPW had some other-
I mean, you could even say now, four years or whatever you, you feel you're comfortable with. My recommendation was just, we know that it's gonna take them a while to fundraise, so it's not like other projects, and it gives them a little flexibility. So it's really up to the board to decide, you know, and that then would, you know, preclude them having to come back. So, yeah, so then DPW sent their final comments this afternoon, and a lot of them are about, there are actually not that many comments relative to having the project, but there were three, in particular about water connections, and, and there was, the engineer spoke to one of them about reusing one of the sleeves. But I think instead of getting into specificity, if you would just wanna put a condition that says that the applicant has to connect, use waterline connections in, in compliance with DPW standards for connecting to the waterlines, that'll cover all of those issues that they had concern with. And they talked, one of the concerns is switching out the, the waterline size and all of that. So I think they have the comments, they know what the DPW requirements are relative to that. And, so, I think we already talked about the stormwater, they had, DPW was concerned about the fact that there wasn't enough soil information to understand the infiltration allowances that were shown on the plan. So they want a written report for review and approval about, you know, final design and, and soil composition to show that the roof runoff can be handled, or that the system proposed where there, where there might be some infiltration and then overflow into the city, city system works.
Can I stop you there just a minute to see if the approval of that would have to come from this board in a hearing, or can we get that less formally right from DPW in their review?
No, you wouldn't have to come back to the planning board for that. So, they just wanna see the final drainage calculations, basically. And then, they also want an executed stormwater operations and maintenance plan prior to issuance of a building permit.
Yep.
And their specificity about how that's done, we have a standard for what needs to be in that stormwater maintenance. So it's pretty boilerplate. And, they had similar concerns about the ponding issues with the, around the granite wall, so, and a question about where the, there's a six-inch perforated pipe below the backside of the wall, and they had a question about where that drains, where the outlet.
We can provide that.
But the board might wanna know that, too, 'cause if it's going into the public sidewalk, that could be an issue with freezing.
We would tie it into the, we would tie it into the storm drain, drain system, it's just a, and, and we may not actually even need that drain, because it is, it was just to alleviate any hydrostatic pressure behind that wall, but it, since it's all paved up above it, we may not actually need it when we, when we do our final calculations.
But if you did need it, it'd be tied into the-
It'd be tied into the, into the storm drain system.
So, you might wanna just consider conditions, saying that, you know, any drainage pipes on the front sidewalk have to be tied in to the-
So, I just clarified that, that connection to the storm drain system would be first onto our site and then part of the whole property connection to the city, not another connection to the-
Right, right, that makes sense.
Okay.
And then, I just wanna, so then I think the board probably needs to discuss more about that sidewalk in the plaza area and, you know, the issue about dimensions, and, and also finally, sort of rebuilding that public portion of the sidewalk to make sure it blends in with the entire plaza area, so you don't have, you know, any kind of issue with, you know, not matching up and creating a disconnect, you know, between the existing conditions and what they're proposing, which is many times a requirement when projects come forward, you have to rebuild the portion of the public walk in front of the building.
Right.
Carolyn, it says, if the city pulls the retaining wall, which presumes that there's been some thought about the city, what's the issue there?
So, we applied for this Massworks grant on Pleasant Street, they would address a whole host of things, but mostly pedestrian connections and crosswalks and green infrastructure, green drainage along, from Strong Avenue south all the way down to Holy Oaks Street, Hockenham Road. And as part of that application, we looked at creating a, so here's the rail trail connection here, and there's a tall retaining wall here, sort of boxes in and makes, makes site really complicated and difficult when you're coming down the bike path, you don't know who's coming. So part of the grant was to look at pulling this back to here, maybe, you know, whatever the, the air part is, and having this more of a gradual open sort of area, so it's much more friendly in terms of safety and also visibility there. And if that happens, we wanna make a coordinated sort of transition zone between public and private space there. And we didn't get the grant, but we're going to, probably, we think, because it wasn't, these grants are granted if you have a construction-ready project, and it wasn't construction-ready 'cause we had a lot of design that we, you know, details that we had to work out. So we're actually gonna move ahead on getting the design piece of it done, so that next year's cycle will be more construction-ready than we are this year, and maybe more successful at getting the grant.
Okay. The public comment portion is still actually open. Is there anyone in the public that wants to speak?
I will be closed.
Close second. A test, rather, all in favor? All right, so public portion is closed, we've got conditions from staff and DPW. Do we wanna talk anymore about the sidewalk slash plaza in front?
Only, and I am loath to suggest getting rid of trees, but, I mean, especially now that, this particular view, there's a lot happening in that kind of, you know, section of sidewalk, and I guess I am now, I realize that the, if just above that, the trees actually sit back, but you've got a much wider total space, if I'm remembering correctly.
The building's setback for-
Right, the building is back here, this is all concrete.
Right, but the trees are-
And the trees are in, are sort of right along in here.
Right.
And so they, you can see here how this is drawn, that this is the three-foot brick section of the sidewalk, and then there's the three-foot concrete section. And we have taken, again, and matched that all along-
Right.
Actually, a little bit broader. And this is just a, this is our concrete score joint coming through here, and then we're making that entry to the driveway rather than the asphalt coming all the way through, we're carrying that over. And then along up through here, you might be able to see it better on this. So this is the-
Except that the public hearing's closed.
Right, so, but if they're adding information for us, then that's fine. So I mean, if, if we need the information for the public.
Yep.
But, what, what makes it hard, too, is the elevation change-
Right, that's, yeah.
Is, is, it's not like building in the front or north where it's all one level.
Right, yeah, there's, yeah, like, you know, there's just a lot, and, and, you know, not unlike over by, you know, across some Fitzwillies where you have-
Right.
This kind of, you know, I don't know if it's quite as big as that, but, I, I don't know, I, I mean, some reason I almost wanna think about, well, would it be better, I hate to say this, without the trees and it just kind of a clean surface? I, I don't, I don't know.
I actually am not bothered at all by the trees away from the road there. I mean, I think they're, they're trees over a seated, you know, sitting area. They, they, I think they break up the, that, you know, idea of just putting trees right on the, the street all the way down, and I, so I'm just really not bothered by it. I want the sidewalk wide enough.
What about with the, with the, instead of having greenery in there, the, what are the, the drains? Which you can walk on, actually, and, but leaving them on the, on the interior rather than exterior.
Um, and, uh, but leaving them on the, on the interior rather than exterior is a compromise.
I'd assume that's what they were.
No, it's, see, they're sitting in the greenery.
Yeah, there's grass.
There's strips of, um, grass.
So it's all like in grass.
So that would make them like the ones next to it? If, if, if something along those lines? Okay.
So in other places on the city sidewalks where we have trees that.
In the grate, right.
And, and realistically, when you have little patches of grass like that.
Dogs put on them.
They're never going to look like they do in this.
Yeah, they're going to, yeah.
No, no.
In fact, my favorite are to get the recessed, you know, with the, with the little border fence to keep people from tripping into it, but I've seen some really nice treatments of tree boxes in new construction I saw in DC at the Navy Yard did a great job of all of that. But I, I don't, I don't feel strong enough about it. I just wanted to say I'm not bothered.
Yeah.
Well, the grates you can walk right over.
Up.
Right, that's the point.
Yeah, maybe that's, yeah.
What the architects think of that? Why, if there was a reason that it wasn't done that way, not allowed to? Can you whisper?
So is the orientation of the trees not an issue? It's just.
Yeah, it was more just, yeah, the grass.
Versus grass.
Yeah, it was just, yeah, it was just, there was, I don't know, it wasn't that the trees that were there, it was just maybe going to the other, to the grate-like type treatment instead of the, the trying to fit in grass and.
I do, I do think though, there is some benefit to the trees, I mean, being closer to the street and having the pedestrians walk behind them so they're not walking right on the street. It's, I think, a little safer and has a better feel to it. Um, and that way also I believe the sidewalk where you are walking would be quite a bit wider.
Brett, well, just a reminder where this is now, you know, I agree with a lot of what's been said, but this is a very, um, you know, active bus stop. So there's, you know, I walk past this, you know, 12 to 15 times a week and, you know, there's just as many people walking as there are sitting and waiting for the bus. So, you know, I kind of like where the trees are because, you know, you have a lot of curbside activity and, you know, it's kind of, it makes that more accessible. I'm about to say something I can't believe I'm going to say, but I'm going to say it anyway. I love the seating. Um, I, I think it's great, particularly in the context of, you know, this schematic where it looks more like it's an office setting. I think there should, we might just be mindful of retailers who maybe aren't as enthusiastic about having open concrete seating outside of, you know, I'm, I'm, wouldn't be one of those retailers, but from what I've heard from other folks in town, that may be a concern.
There's no back though.
Say again?
There's no back to just.
True, this is true. There's no back on the sidewalk either, but, you know, there's a lot of folks who camp out. So, you know, again, that's not a personal position, but it's just something to be mindful of in terms of design that if we're talking about, you know, small-scale retail versus office use, it just, you know.
One thing is, I know you followed the conversation about the benches, so let's just go ahead and talk about it. But one thing about that that has come up is that if you divide it into seating positions, even with the, on your design, we've talked about doing arm benches that would break it up so it doesn't become a reclining, uh, offer. And in your case, you can do the same thing in breaking up that flat top surface by just edging it with seating, you know, a little raised area that makes it not suitable to sleep on. So, I mean, there could be some easy consideration to that. I actually really like the benches because it is the bus stop. It serves the purpose.
Right.
And so.
But the reason they're there in the first place is because of the grade change.
Right.
They wouldn't be, they wouldn't exist, they need to exist.
Right.
Because they're serving a function.
And plantings couldn't serve as a, a barrier between the grade change, could they?
No, you'd need a retaining wall or a bench or granite or something. So in my view, if you're going to have seating, because you need to have, or you're, you're going to have the granite wall, which I like because it, it continues the, the retaining wall that already exists and kind of brings it around the front. If that physically needs to be there, I'd rather have the trees next to this, this sitting area than away from you by the street.
Aren't you sure?
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
So I'm, I'm, I'm happy with just the way it is minus the grass because I don't think that's realistic and it might make that walkway feel wider.
Right.
Be slightly wider, feel more wide.
Right, yeah.
And we don't know if there, there will or will not be, uh, PBTA hasn't proposed a bus shelter or anything on this stretch, right? So this is effectively the, the new bus stop.
Any chance for a trash can?
Well, on the public end, they might end up putting something, but that won't be for the applicant. So how do we make that a condition?
What did you say?
Yes, yeah.
I know, I didn't.
So how do we make that a?
I think we're saying we want no grass, but with the walking grates, whatever they're called, there must be a name for them.
Tree grates.
Tree grates.
Tree grates and paving in lieu of grass.
Mm-hmm. Retaining the trees.
Right.
Okay.
The trees exist well enough in those boxes with the grate.
So they don't get, the soil doesn't get compacted.
All right, we've got a bunch of conditions and I think we're ready.
Um, I.
Maybe not.
I, I feel like the elephant in the room needs to come out and get talked about parking. I mean, I, it's, we should just, I, I would feel remiss in our responsibility to discussing the project not to have talked about that. So, um, you can, I've heard different numbers as the project has developed for the parking that you might have wanted.
Seven.
Oh, public hearings, well, then we can talk about it.
Seven is the number that's in there when I counted. No, there's one on the other side.
Who is it?
Yeah, there were seven, I think.
The plan only shows five.
Okay, so here's the issue.
There's five and then one on the other side.
But I also, there's two dozen market racing units here. So you can't really tell me there won't be cars associated with these units. So what's going to have to happen is there's going to have to be some sort of warehousing or placing the cars somewhere else. And so I.
Can that be the parking area?
I, I don't think it, I mean, I, I don't think this is insurmountable. I think we all want this built, but I, I just think that we ought to, as much as there will be about that issue, we ought to talk about what we think we're doing in central business residential building.
Do we have authority to impose parking requirements?
No.
It's, it's not required in central business and in.
They could provide zero. And they have.
In my view, I mean, I, I haven't really said my opinion about the project as whole. I think it's wonderful. I think it's, I think the massing is great, the, the scale, how it presents itself as you come into the town. And I would, while I understand the parking issue, I would hate to take part of this building away and replace it with a parking. Um, and so presumably the applicant has done the homework and they don't think a lack of parking will be an issue for the, for the residents.
I think that's really good. We'll have zip cars in there.
I mean, I do think there will be.
Within a five-minute walk, there's, there's all this parking.
I mean, I had the.
Go ahead.
On the other, that's true. On the other hand, I park in the garage ever, ever since it's been built, five days a week. And it gets very crowded at times, sometimes more than other. If you get there past, I don't know, 11 o'clock in the morning, you're parking on the top level. Um, and that's without sidewalk sales and whatever. Of course, now that there's.
Yeah, that's, that won't be an issue.
Well, I think where I want to go with this is I'm not really talking to the building and the applicant, I'm talking to the city.
In general, yeah.
Right.
And I'm saying, you know, it's something that if we do this project and the following project.
Then it's going to have to be consideration of another.
And we redo Pleasant Street and we've got a parking study going on.
And that's why I think we're in the middle of a parking study, right.
That I want that, uh, contract process of the parking study to be well-informed about what the projects they can't see look like.
Probably the next one, the lumberyard is far enough away from the garage so it won't be so convenient and they may have to provide parking to be marketable. I don't know.
Well, and I completely agree and, and I, when this, they use this slide and, you know, and, yeah, wow, 1,500 parking spots, that's, well, jeez, that seems like a lot. But I think Alan makes a good point. All of us that live in North Hampton and come downtown on any kind of regular basis, there are times when it's hard to find a parking spot. So, I mean, so there are lots within a five-minute wa- walk, but they're getting filled up. And, and, and so I, you know, I do think there was something that we're going to have to think about kind of as a municipality that, you know, we, we've done a good job of it, but, you know, that, that is starting to fill up.
I, I think we can think about it, but not in this context because in this context, it's not, we can't do anything about it.
What is the timeline, if any, on the parking study that's being done?
I, I don't know. I mean, that's the simplest answer.
Last night, though, four, four months, Wednesday night, four months.
But, you know, even.
But that will just be the study.
Right, right. We've had a lot of studies.
We also know that the trend is very much moving in the direction of people who are living downtown are not bringing the same kind of cars as, as historically people have brought to their residential units. So, um.
Can we put as a requirement that they only rent to people who don't have cars?
I mean, it's funny, I was going to go the opposite direction on this project and say, do we even have to have five parking spaces on here? I mean.
I assume that's for staff or whatever.
Right, perhaps staff, but, you know, just to not have.
You need to bring things in and get them inside and.
So I'm willing to back out of this bee's nest and just say, I really do like the project a lot. And, uh, and I, I didn't even have some of the design concerns. I thought you'd thought it through really well. And, and it's, I, I think people are going to be really tickled.
All right, who wants to tickle me with a motion? Let me rephrase that.
What do we have?
Can we have all the DPW? We've got, we've got the conditions per staff, the conditions DPW and the, uh, walkway in front.
We approve it with the staff, the DPW and the DPW recommendations and the requirement that the grass be even, tree grates be utilized.
Second? Second, go. All in favor? Ready to go? Thank you.
Thank you.
I presume you're continuing to meet?
Yeah.
So, can we have two minutes to get our cred out of here or would you rather we come back later?
No, no, you can go.
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks very much.
Anyone who definitely wants their color renderings?
Need to draw on parking spots?
No, they're coming this, you can see.
Oh, yeah.
Just the color ones you want?
Yes.
Sorry.
You want them all?
Uh, sure.
Will you do it?
Their project is.
Nice, good idea.
Or maybe you don't have any, but, um, so lumberyard, is this project and lumberyard, are they competing for the same low-income housing tax credits? Like, so is there a possibility that.
So what is this one?
Is going to end up here in North Hampton? Like that either.
No, I think they have several rounds. Typically you might.
So you did it for a staggering, you could go to the next one. So it's not like one is going to cannibalize the other.
Right. So Christopher Heaton, they, they failed on their first attempt.
Okay.
They got their second attempt. Now they're moving forward. The next couple of it.
The duplexes.
Oh, that is on the agenda.
It's not on.
They gave us. Oh, yeah. We're not talking about.
Having one of those projects for a long time just happens to come.
That is.
Okay, kids, we're still, we're still live. Um, we've got one more order of business tonight scheduled for 8:40, so we're almost a full hour behind, uh, to review the amendment to rules governing subdivision of land. Carolyn has a 45-minute slide presentation.
I don't have as many pretty pictures. So I guess the question for you is, I, I can connect to the projector and we can walk through the entire ordinance or I don't know if you have it digitally or printed out and you want me to just walk through from here or what you're.
We don't have it printed out.
Well, I didn't, I wasn't anticipating that you might print it out, but so I'd be happy to put it on the projection, so I'll just move over to the podium and do that.
You going to do a summary?
Well, um, I could, I mean, a lot of it I think is, can be summarized because, um, it's sort of just updates and text changes, but I think what I could do is do a summary, but then go over more detail for the substance.
Yep.
Oh, my goodness, look at that. Whoa.
Fancy printer.
It's in type, it's two types.
Yeah.
I did two sheets per page. For now.
Right, yeah. Yeah. It's teeny, can you?
Yeah.
She's the only person.
Can I, can I run and grab her?
Yeah, yeah.
But okay.
She will be, she starts being.
Wow. You don't want to look at it?
Hit a light.
I've gotten some kind of paint. You know, the gallons has all the instructions and directions and stuff. You can, I'm canceling if you buy a court, it's the exact same thing, but they reduce it to a court size.
How do you want to do this?
Uh, the other side.
Supposed to be.
Yeah, that's probably good. Thanks. Okay.
I'm going to sit in there.
So, um, just big picture summary, um, we, the, um, the planning board is charged with establishing rules and regulations as it relates to building new streets, which are, um, which is all a subdivision really is, is about the infrastructure for the construction of new streets in the city. But the other, um, piece of what the planning board is charged with doing, and so they're, under that jurisdiction, the board has to establish rules in, um, in order for applicants to follow and, and those are the, those are the rules that, um, are not just guidelines, but they're hard and fast and only the planning board adopts such rules. So you hold the public hearings to modify subdivision, changes to subdivision regulations and you adopt them and it doesn't go to city council or any other body. Um, the, um, a lot of this is, is very technical, relates to size of pipes, you know, the type of materials that, and how you, um, lay sidewalk and, and roadway. So we've had, we've always relied on the city engineers to, um, provide the technical information as it relates to those specifications and some of it comes from DOT, some of it comes from other sources. So for this revision, we also worked, staff worked very closely with Department of Public Works to make sure that they were comfortable with these modifications because they're the ones who then have to maintain these streets if they are to become public streets as approved by city council. Uh, the other piece of the subdivision regulations are that they, um, based on more recent case law, um, and, and issues that have arisen throughout the Commonwealth, um, that they are, need, we need to apply the same standards to the private sector that we do to ourselves. So we can't require certain things to be, um, for the private development and not have the city abide by the same rules. So this first, um, section here is really, is very clear saying these rules also serve as a, as, um, technical standards for any street improvements this city might undertake. So for instance, the total reconstruction of North Street, um, we really push that we have granite curbs because our subdivision standards say that, um, when a new street's built, we have to use. to use granite curbs, because they last, you know, forever, and they don't break apart. So, but we wanted to spell that out in this version. So, there, those are the two important pieces of the subdivision rules that are in this document, and are what the document is used for. So, we've added that here. And again, sort of, I've kept you up to speed as we've made these amendments, but this represents this change, and why there's so many red lines, or blue lines, I guess, on the screen, is that it's another significant shift in the way we're looking at infrastructure, try to minimize the total impervious surface that we're encouraging people to build, or that the city is looking at in terms of rebuilding, and also encourage new ways of dealing with stormwater, because stormwater's always been an element of dealing with the street network. And the rules up to this point have really been about a piped system that takes the water somewhere else and then slowly dissipates, and gets to the rivers and streams and goes off somewhere else. So, this, these standards create, I wouldn't say necessarily incentives, but it spell out how you would incorporate what we're calling green infrastructure into any kind of street network construction. And that is, I think, the biggest piece that will help in terms of the city side. When we look at reconstructing, we don't anticipate that there're gonna be a lot of new subdivisions in Northampton, but we do know that we're gonna be rebuilding the streets that we have over and over. So, this is also really important in terms of guiding the city on how we incorporate new ways of dealing with stormwater, once we go in and reconstruct streets. So, a lot of the aspects in the, in this deal with those details of when it should be used, how it should be used, and other, and variations to the network that would accommodate what we're calling low-impact design or green infrastructure. So, and we've also changed a lot of terminology. We're deleting some definitions that, so, for instance, collector streets, and, you know, sort of this hierarchy of streets that has been the mon, the engineering standard for decades.
Ever, ever, yeah.
Because we're really trying to talk about is, are more complete streets that are focused on slower speeds and all modes of access, whether it's walking, or bicycle, or driving. So, a lot, that's the reason for the deletion of these definitions, and the addition of other items that relate, in this case, critical root zone, defining where we want trees to be protected, how we want them to be protected, existing trees, so that when a project comes forward, we're not going in and cutting all the trees down just to build a road. We've also had to update our digital file standards, get rid of floppy disks references and things like that. So, that's what this section is about. Again, digital files. And defining, again, drip lines as it relates to protecting trees, and adding definitions for green infrastructure and low-impact development. And so, again, we worked with DPW to make sure they were comfortable with this. We also know that Department, because in parallel, Department of Public Works, or specifically the stormwater people, were developing the utility and were focused on that, so they did not have a whole lot of time to put into the details of the stormwater piece of the low-impact design. There's been a cursory review by Department of Public Works over this, but we also, they were comfortable enough for this to move forward, knowing that if it was critical for us to go back and make amendments, we could bring those to you in bits that just deal with low-impact design, if there's some tweaking of the language, to make sure it's consistent with what the stormwater ordinance says. But, for the most part, we are consistent with that, there just may be things that need to be modified later. And I guess the biggest thing is, we don't even discuss, I mean, the, there's a very limited reference currently in the subdivision regulations about low-impact design. It just says, we'd love you to use it, basically, and that's it. And this goes into more detail about allowances, and also more encouraging the use of that. And I think the next, and these are just graphics to illustrate what we mean, so that it's, it can be used as a manual for any of these designers. So, this is all the definition section, it's at the front end of the ordinance. And then, here we go to the streets type. So, instead of having local streets and collector streets, we're changing the way, how we label them. And so, there are four types we're proposing, that we include a private alley allowance, not that we think that they're going to be alleys, but if the opportunity comes up, we wanna have a set of standards that someone can go to and say, oh, your rules allow me to put an alley, so I wanna do an alley. And frankly, we see that at the front end of new subdivision submittals, applicants come forward and staff might make a recommendation about doing some narrower streets or alleys, and applicants don't wanna go down that path if there're no rules and there's no guarantee that they can get approval. These subdivision rules are sort of the guarantee. If you build according to the rules, then you have to be granted a permit. So, another reason, sort of add a broader allowance for the type of streets. So, private street, sorry, private alleys, and then we've talked to you, staff has talked a little bit about residential shared streets, and I, and there's been a lot of debate about whether this is an appropriate street for a public street, and, you know, how it might work. So, what we're pitching in this is, a residential shared street would be a private street only, you couldn't petition for it to become a public way. And primarily, it's because the whole concept of a shared street is that there's no sidewalk infrastructure, that all the modes are sharing one piece of real estate essentially, and it's a narrow, two-way street, but there might be curves or obstacles in the street to really force cars to be going very slowly. And the problem for Department of Public Works was, how do you plow that? How do you maintain that if you can't, if you don't have a straight stretch where you can just go down? So, by making it a requirement that if you wanna do this kind of thing, that it be private, then that takes it, the burden of maintaining those kinds of things. So, in other communities around the country, some of the obstacles have been tree planters, or, you know, stub outs, maybe curb out, bump outs, and things like that.
If it's a private street, why are there standards?
Because we, that's a good question. Because we want every street to abide by the same rules, some, part of it is for protection of the end user. And, and the other piece of it is, that's primarily it, we, but we wanna have, we wanna make sure it's built according to, you know, high standard, and not just, you know, on the fly, without really consideration of all the engineering details that are necessary that we might require from, you know, even if it's.
It's fine with me, but I just was trying to.
And the other piece about this definition is to sort of, you know, we just went through this whole process of incorporating new design standards for the zoning for urban residential C and B, and so this is sort of a cross-reference to the language in that zoning that says, you know, if you're gonna build an access way from a street into a development, you need to build it according to subdivision standards, so it's either a shared street or an alley. So, this also would stand for those site plans or special permit applications that you might see. These would be the standards by which someone would design for those projects that aren't necessarily a subdivision, but would come through a site plan or special permit. And so, it's really just adding graphics, and again, we need, this is not the final layout, because we have to deal with all the deletions and that, but we wanted to make sure that it was clear, that the text went along with a, hopefully, a pretty picture that just, that shows what we mean. And then, the third kind of street is a residential yield street, which is really, and this is, would be a public street, but it's really a reflection of the, all, most of the streets that we have in the older parts of Northampton, where you actually do have to pull over if there's a parked car and wait for the other car to come. So, we have lots of examples in town of neighborhoods, so this is sort of going back and replicating the way streets were built, and in order to ensure that the, the speeds of those roads are slower, and that we're not creating these wide, fast-moving corridors. And then specifying that at each intersection, we want the intersections with other streets to be narrowed, so that it really forces cars, cars to slow down when they're making turns, and then they can widen out to 24 feet, which allows on-street parking for the bulk of the street beyond that initial intersection or mouth of the intersection.
Which is actually two feet wider than we have now.
Right, so currently, the standard for a basic residential street is 22 feet wide, and we still do allow on-street parking, but it's 22 feet wide all the way through, including, and actually, the curb radiuses are wider typically. So, this is widening out the driving portion of it, but narrowing it at the intersections, and creating it safer for those pedestrian crossings at the sidewalk.
Well, and it's not that tight, interstates are 12, 12-foot lanes, so in the regular street, you've got a lot of space.
Right, right, right. So, this is just a picture of Walnut Street, I wanna say, but it's basically the same idea that we already have in our neighborhoods, this type of street.
Snow plows get around that, all right, I guess? That must, looks a little challenging for that.
Well, right, but we also have snow emergencies, so you have to get your car off the street so the plows can get through, and that's typically what happens. And if not, then yeah, you might get plowed in.
I'm not talking about damage to the curb and the plow and everything like that.
You mean where the arrow is?
Yeah, where the, where the curb.
Oh, I see, at the intersect, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, again, that goes back to why we want granite curbing, because, but I think the other piece, I mean, there is some educational piece that the, the plow operators will, and these will be marked as well, in terms of, you know, the curb extensions, and that's what we've been trying to develop over time in any new or reconstruction of a street, is try to, and what we've talked about in terms of Main Street and Pleasant Street for improvements, is to create those curb extensions. So, I think it'll be more familiar, the more that we do this, the plow operators will become more familiar with that. So, then, the last street type is really the mixed-use or commercial street, and it's a little bit wider. So, the, the total width is, is 30, potentially 30 feet, but again, narrowing at the, take it away. So, again, at the intersections, and for an extension back, this would be a narrow area for safe pedestrian crossings, and then it would widen. And this is similar to what's been designed and built up at the state hospital, where they've created a wider area for on-street parking.
You've also got it in downtown Pittsview.
Yes, I think this picture is from.
That's what the picture is.
Yeah, yeah. But this also is showing, so another opportunity to do green infrastructure and drainage from the street, so taking water from the street, filtering it through those planter, planting grounds. So, again, eliminating the definition of subdivision type 2 and type 1, which is, was always really pretty much a residential subdivision or a commercial subdivision. We're not changing the definition of surveyor. And modifying waiver allowances, and particularly in this paragraph, to encourage green development practices, so that, sort of another reason why someone might come to you for a waiver, we wanted to specifically include that as a, as an incentive, really, to think about different ways of handling development. And these are all just sort of upgrades.
Carolyn, one quick note on the, the maybes there, I think, there are two words, yeah? Wait, if you go down a little bit more. There's two words. This is to having 14 sets of documents, and then three maybe reduced sets.
Oh, yes.
So, there's two of them that got, like, concatenated into one word.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I'll send it again.
Yeah, it's page 12.
Okay. I can probably go back and do a spell thing. Not maybe, but maybe.
Right. Yeah, they're, they're very.
Okay, right. Okay. And Devin told me that I missed a planning and sustainability reference, so I'll have to go back and find that. So, contents of the plan, we really looked, went through, and reorganized and rethought what we wanted. There was, there was, there was a requirement that applicants submit a colored plan showing the entire subdivision that was separate from the actual black-and-white plans. We found that it was really more paper and more resource expense, and didn't really get us necessarily any additional information that we didn't have, so deleted that. And added requirements about looking at the layouts of streets and trying to get south-facing access as much as possible, encourage, language about encouraging low-impact design, and incorporating, you know, more specificity about what you do if you wanna incorporate low-impact design.
Carolyn, we should check re-evaluation 2. Numbers keep going up. We gotta try re-evaluation 3, or maybe even 4 now, we should check that.
Okay. Should I just put X?
Well, Devin knows it, I'm sure.
Yeah, I didn't see that on your list. And also, references to DEP stormwater requirements are changing. And, let's see. I think it's probably further down here, but, right, so here's the colored plan reference, so we're just deleting all of that. And the form of the plans, what to submit, and then contents of the plans, just cleaning up the language. So, here, we've added in terms of what you need to submit with your subdivision, added more information or more requirements about trees, both on the existing properties, but also on the immediately surrounding properties, and that's really just sort of judgment over the last several years, when a sub, when an application for subdivision comes in, and the view just cuts off at the property, but there might be big tree root zones that come across where you're planning a road, and so it's important to understand where those are. And we've eliminated, we've, we've proposed that, that we take out the environmental impact analysis, and it's, and, and development impact statements, for a couple of reasons. One is, we're asking for, some of this included sort of architectural or archaeological resources. We would wanna see where that is, but we don't necessarily need a full assessment, and frankly, a lot of what applicants would submit, they'd go through the submission requirements. and frankly, a lot of what applicants would submit, they'd go through the submission requirements and not really address what we're looking for, so it was kind of a waste of time, I guess I would say. But also, if you build according to the subdivision regulations, you're going to get a permit because that's what the law says, the planning board has to issue a permit. So what are we going to do with this information that says, you know, we need, this is going to increase school enrollment by 100 students? You still have to issue the subdivision approval if they meet the standards. And it's just cleaning up the language, clarifying. And then this additional language is really sort of relocating some of the information that we had already, but more specificity about work limit areas and site disturbance and looking at ways to really design the subdivision that's context-sensitive and thinking about, you know, what to preserve and what to, where the best place for infrastructure. And then a requirement that we want to know whether you're taking topsoil away because it's a valuable resource and what you're going to do with it, and trying to encourage people to reuse it onsite instead of removing it. See how easy this is? We're just whipping right through this. What page are we on now?
Yeah, third is the waiver.
Lighting standards, you guys are all up to speed on that. Want to make sure it's consistent with zoning. And then just cleaning up the financial performance guarantees. Let's see where the heart of this is. It's coming. A lot more about stormwater and specificity about that. And now we get to the design standards in the table for all the streets. So this is where we're really talking about those, the dimensions of those street widths and cross-sections. And for the, so again, it's the difference, the variation of four different types of streets that we didn't have before, private alley, private shared street, residential yield street, which is a standard residential street, and then a mixed-use commercial street. And this is more the specificity about how you lay those out and the materials. And, again, all of this has been reviewed by DPW and they're fine with these modifications. We went through all these specifics of these standards for the depth of asphalt, and they made some recommendations. So just to say, you know, we're not making this up with no input in terms of an engineering standard at all. And these are crosswalk standards. The DPW, we've had crosswalk construction standards that's varied over the years as we've sort of played with different models and what works. So DPW is pretty happy with the concept of thermoplastic and ladder design, so we want to make sure that's in there.
Just a question, sidewalks, for example, on both sides of the street.
Uh-huh.
I don't know, that's something that's been in effect a long time. I guess it just, you know, there are these residential areas that are fairly rural and they only kind of get the traffic that's on their street or two, on their street. And it just seems kind of burdensome to put, have to spend the money to put sidewalks on both sides of the street when crossing the street, you know? It's really not a very dangerous situation.
Um.
I mean, it just seems very expensive, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think the issue is safety, we want to make sure, and some of those streets, you know, I think the way that streets are built or have been built, they could potentially be where fast-moving vehicles are, and they aren't safe necessarily to walk in the street or isn't safe to walk in the street.
I know that's the case in some areas, but I just think of a lot of the developments and that have been built way up off of Burt's Pit Road and beyond, and, you know, there's, I don't know, it just seems a little heavy-handed to impose that kind of cost. And I don't, I guess, you know, I just don't know if that type of decision-making, you know, and what types of costs you're putting on these developers, you know, to make a project go, are considered in planning here.
Yeah, I mean, one of the, I guess I would say, in many of those streets off of Burt's Pit Road, where there aren't sidewalks, the streets are much wider. And we've narrowed this over time, we've narrowed streets and required sidewalks on both sides. So in some cases, there may be somewhat of a trade-off, maybe not, you know, entirely a trade-off in terms of cost, putting sidewalk versus wider asphalt for cars. The other piece of it is, those streets being wide, cars can go very fast, whether or not they do, and it's not a safe situation to have pedestrians also in the street.
Right, but the streets are narrow now.
Right.
So we're not talking about those streets.
Right. The other piece of it is, we have a provision that if you're doing low-impact development, you can either, you can have no curbing for a portion of your street and potentially no sidewalk on one side, although we'd still want some kind of, you know, off-street, maybe a path, pedestrian path. But that's one way, you know, to change that equation a little bit, potentially, is if you are then doing onsite stormwater management and you are going to do it on one side of the road, for example, so you need a green swale or, you know, entire stretch, then these regulations would allow you to come to the planning board and request, you know, elimination of sidewalk on one side.
We should also add that every subdivision we had now for 25 years in suburban areas are cluster projects, so they have a lot less frontage. So they're 75 feet of frontage, that's all that's required.
Right.
So even the new subdivisions are denser than, you know, the old subdivisions spread out all over the land, so they might have had 125 feet of frontage, 150. So now, they are denser, we're trying to get less roads.
More traffic, you know, like the government.
More traffic, right, more traffic in a concentrated area, but less, the biggest savings we've been trying to do for developers is less roads in the first place, shorter roads with sidewalks in the whole street.
The other thing, the other change in this, because the design speeds are much slower in this new, with these new standards, that also reduces a lot of the other geometry of the street, the angles of the intersection, the site distances, and many times applicants would come forward and ask for waivers for certain straight line, you know, straight line to an intersection so that you can have full site distance around the intersection. And DPW's recommendation to the board would often be, no, your standard says X, so we're not going to waive, and it's a big deal to waive the standard, but in fact, it was really based on higher design speeds. So this creates, it sort of has a whole domino effect on all the geometry and all the numbers, I guess, for the design, based on really encouraging people to build streets that are for slower speeds. And then we just changed graphics and requirements for cul-de-sacs and instead, having one-way cul-de-sacs instead of having a two-way with a big bulb at the end. Think about it more as a slower, one-way loop that's slightly different shape. Let's go through here. And then, these are just sections to show what the table, cross-sections that are required for submittal, but also to illustrate what the new dimensional requirements are for laying all the infrastructure under the road. So we had to match that to the, to the new table, the new standards in the table. And then all this is just deleting the previous standard that's being replaced by the new And again, talking about design speeds being 15 miles per hour for most of these streets, except for the commercial streets, and incorporating all modes of access. Okay, how far am I?
Fifty.
This section is about, about the sidewalk construction standards, but also incorporating more low-impact design standards, particularly as it relates to sidewalks in the streets, and what that would look like. So we had to incorporate that in, so there's specificity for applicants. And more, sort of beefed up the tree requirements and the preservation of trees and protection of the trees that are intended to be preserved for the subdivision once it's finished. And more examples of how you might incorporate green infrastructure into a new subdivision where you might not have curbs, and how you would, you know, what kind of elements you would incorporate into that. Another, a standard to encourage non-potable water for irrigation, we don't have that language, but we always talk about it, so we just decided to put this in. And then, this is the tree, the tree species. We went through and looked at the tree, current tree list, and tried to sort of, tried to update it based on climate change and what trees might not be so viable in the future because they're really for colder zones. So some of these represent deletions, and then more specificity about the kinds of trees that might be, that are better suited for, in the urban context. We've also added, so I think I deleted a total of three trees based on sort of trying to project climate impacts to tree species and trees that would do better in Northampton based on changing climate. And then, we've also added trees that might be appropriate to be planted under utility lines, because we don't have any specificity now, but applicants come before you even under a site plan submission and say, well, you know, I need to do street trees, but I have all these electric, you know, utility lines over my property, what do I do? So we wanted to spell those out so that we have a reference point for anyone, not just coming in for subdivision, but for special department or site plan, or site plan, I should say, to use these specific trees if you're planting under utility lines. And we're also working on a list, a short list of trees that might be appropriate if someone's truly doing, trying to do an edible streetscape. And we are working, in particular, we know that the next subdivision to come forward is probably going to be at the State Hospital, and there's an interest for the applicant to incorporate some edible landscape into their design. So they've given us a list of trees they're thinking about, and I'm currently going through and making sure that that makes sense in the context of all the other things that we've talked about, well, in particular, our climate and our zone, you know, are we changing, we're certainly in a transition zone between five and six now, and, you know, what makes sense for that, and then also in terms of stress and salt tolerance, not all trees would work in terms of a street tree. But we want to also, you know, encourage that if people are in fact doing that, that they can do that, but the homeowners association would be responsible for maintaining those specific trees, because if they're meant to, you know, for this other purpose, then we need to make sure we have better maintenance of those, because we certainly don't have that ability at the DPW level or any other department level to maintain edibles. So what I would say is, you know, if you want to close this discussion and make a decision tonight, that's great. If you want to see the final with some of these details, I can bring that back to you, or, under either scenario, if we have a modification for those trees, I would bring them back to you to make sure that you all are comfortable with that. So there's more standards about design work and trying to respect the existing topography, and I got comments from Devin about, I think you were the one that said, to the extent feasible is not a good term to use in this context, so demonstrate that they will minimize land clearing, so we can look at that language. But this whole section is really about trying to direct people to, again, look at the piece of property first and figure out what makes sense, where it makes sense to develop, and And again, in reference to topsoil, I guess I need to double-check that, why it's in two I think it has to do with design specs. And then we've added this soil classification table that we've not had before. Again, DPW feels much more comfortable with having something like this in there instead of generally, we used to have a standard, we do soil borings, that the soils are classified as poor, moderate, or good. So I think they're much happier with this. Poor, medium, and good, so we'll delete that. And the same with subgrades. And then more specificity about low-impact design standards and how they might lay out. Now, I will say that you can't put too much specificity about low-impact design because it's all site-specific in the soils that are there, so we're trying to be as specific as we can without, you know, dictating exactly, because there's no way you can do that on a, you have to do it on a case-by-case basis. Let's see, drainage, this is just updating the drainage section to be consistent with our stormwater ordinance on the DPW side. This is still all drainage. And then, again, sort of consistency with DPW as it relates to sewer lines. And then this thing in highlight, I didn't, this is a holdover, it wasn't intended to continue to be highlighted, but we've had a few subdivisions now, or a couple, anyway that I can think of, where everything is privately maintained, and so it's important to make sure that the homeowners who are buying into these subdivisions understand they don't call the DPW when they have a backup on their sewer line. So we want that spelled out instead of having it in a permit condition. And then water line, just upgrades and typos. And this is all based on DPW requests for modifications about our water standards, water line standards. I don't know anything about those, AWWA standards, C600, I just rely on DPW for that. And all of this sort of fire suppression standard, that all stays the same. We made some modifications to the fees. We made some modifications to the fees. There are a couple of things. One, we added a fee for street acceptance. We hadn't had a fee at all. When someone comes in at the end of the subdivision and requests a street be accepted by the city, there's no fee, but it takes a lot of review, a lot of staff time, a lot of back-and-forth checking the plans. So we thought, and, and many other communities have a street acceptance fee, so we've, um, Wayne actually checked around and got a number based on what other communities were charging, so that's $3 per linear foot of street is what we're proposing. And then also requests for release of performance guarantees. Sometimes with a subdivision, it takes, you know, a long time to get through, you get multiple requests, um, to reduce that performance guarantee as they build out the subdivision. And we haven't had a fee, um, at all for that. So it's another just sort of measure indicating, you know, that it does take staff time to evaluate that, so we want to make sure that we're covered for, for that time that it Computer upgrades, no longer floppy disks. And, same thing.
They certainly have a lot of ink color in there.
What, you're going to accept all those and give us a clean version, or?
Um, well, I guess I'd like to ask you, you know, if you have questions, if you want more time to think about it.
So move.
Um, yeah, I mean.
It would be like the, like, you had the example of the treaties. If we accept this as presented, but then you have changes down the line, that you'd bring just those changes back?
Yeah, we'd do another sort of public hearing, but just for that piece. And so I guess the, the reason, you know, why it's important, I think, to move forward now, we've been talking about this for several months, is we're on the cusp of getting another subdivision submission, and so we want to make sure these stand, I mean, the applicant has seen this, and so they're working from this, which is a good thing, but, you know, we want to have those standards in place. And then, two, we've got those zoning changes that went through that reference of the type, street types that are in here, and those are about to be voted upon by city council in the next month or so. So we want to make sure that we're keeping up pace with changes on the zoning side.
Where's the subdivision line?
Hospital.
Hospital Hill.
Did you see that, they say the fee's $3 a foot, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if it's a mile-long subdivision, it's $15,000.
That's a long street.
That's a lot of money.
So is everyone comfortable if we did that approved as presented, and then to stay at least, not get ahead of, but stay on pace with it, with all the, everything else that's moving forward through the city? And then, if there are modifications to this, we'll bring those modifications back and just talk about those?
There may be adjustments, I gather, with other work that's being done yet?
Um, not so much. I mean, the only thing, Devin sent me a list of, and I print it now, but it's on my desk, of just sort of tech, you know, cleanup language things, and a little bit, um, of that kind of thing. And then really, the only thing I anticipate are potentially two things. One is the, the edible trees, I know will come back, because I want to do some more work on that before I present it to you all. And then the other piece might be, um, more language about low-impact design, but my sense from Doug McDonald, DPW, was that he's comfortable with what we have, and if it's really necessary to make changes, you know, he'll take time to look at that later, but he's not concerned about that. So I don't anticipate that would be coming shortly. That might be down the road a little bit.
And this is for, underlying this is sort of the urban design guide. Do they crack that same way as DPW as you do?
Well.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
Um, there's an urban design guide that looks like to me it's underneath some of this because of the low-impact design and, and that, and so I'm just, I'm saying, does DPW, are they on board with that? Can you?
Yeah, I mean, I think too, they're certainly on board with the direction this is going. Okay. And, um, we've also had lots of conversations about what this means in terms of subdivision, and how they potentially design reconstruction. Right. I, I, I'm good.
Okay. So I guess we need a motion to approve the rules governing the subdivision as presented.
I move that we approve the rules governing the subdivision of land as presented to us this evening.
Second? Yes.
Do you want to also simultaneously close the hearing with that motion?
Yes, I did.
I should have asked for public come.
I'm actually surprised there wasn't.
I wish there was more public come. I just feeling that I don't have enough information from both sides of the fence to really understand maybe some of the issues we're potentially creating here tonight. It's frustrating.
My view, it's, I don't know, for creating as many as cleaning up a lot and deferring to, trying to get everybody, the city and developers on the same page, and, and when we're talking about stormwater or anything like that, we defer to DPW. When we talk about trees, who do we defer to on the trees? Or is that you looking up Wikipedia?
Tree media. I want to say I really like the trees under power lines, but for a different reason, because you're encouraging green building, and so solar roofs that have these tall maples over them, you know?
Yeah.
So I like that.
Um.
I, I like, I like the, you know, the trees, the DPW. What concerns me a little bit is kind of this, kind of, it feels like a one-plan-fits-all. And, you know, all the streets have to be a certain width and, um, you know, kind, kind of, you know, with sidewalks on both sides, and, you know, the beauty of Northampton, I think, is the variety of streetscapes that it has, and, um, I just, the reality is, there's not that many subdivisions that are going to be proposed here, so I guess I can get over that, but, um, but if the case was different, I'm not so sure I'd be supportive of, you know, everything kind of under the same plan and look.
Well, just so to, um, as I started this, one of the reasons for having a, sort of the rulebook is that applicants can follow it, but by statute, you have to have a set of standards for approval of streets. And if you, as an applicant, follow what's in the book, then you ought, you get your permit, and so there's a guarantee, essentially. So, um, we have to have specificity about what each thing looks like. There are allowances for waivers. I, I'm not sure if that gets at what you're trying to, what you're speaking to, but, you know, this came up at Village Hill, for example. When the first streets were being designed, they were really hemmed in, to a certain extent, by the old standards that were more suburban in nature, and they were trying to create this other thing. So they came, they came to the planning board with as few waivers as they could, but they still needed waivers from the rules because it was a different type of project. That is, that allowance is still there and at the discretion of the planning board, and there's, there are rules about how you can grant waivers and what you need, um, you know, what the planning board needs to see with a grant of waiver. But, um, so it's a little bit different from zoning, in that zoning regulations are hard and fast, and if you don't, if you don't abide by them, then you have to go to the zoning board for a variance or something. But the reality is, you have to have requirements for how streets are built by state statute.
So we have a motion, second, and a discussion. Any more discussion? No, all in favor?